Very close. We're at 132, our quorum is 150. So we're slightly less than 20 short. So hopefully, which is wonderful, we'll be able to start fairly soon. So if you've got some neighbors, friends who are, you know who are coming, or you want to encourage them to come, tweet, email, text, whatever it takes, call, get them down here. We need 150 to start, and then the quorum is 100 after we start. Everybody like the new time? I think it's going to work out good. We're good? All right, we actually, that was quick. We're at a quorum, so I'll give folks one minute to come inside and sit down, and then we will start.
Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't.
I'd like to call this annual town meeting to order, and the chair would like to very much thank you for your prompt attendance, so we can start. This is a record, five past seven, and so I'm hoping, yes, a round of applause to yourselves for being here. I think this new time is going to work out well. We changed the date, we moved it two weeks back to give our town officials a little more time to work with more accurate budget figures, and that seems to have worked out well. So it's all good, and hopefully we'll be out of here in short order. So I want to welcome you to the annual town meeting, and as we always do, I will recognize the chairman of the board of selectmen, Arthur Boyle, and ask you to stand as Arthur leads us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is always a tradition at the beginning of the annual town meeting to honor the folks that have served the town over the past year. And I encourage you to take a copy of the town report, which if you don't have one, is at the back, and also a copy of the warrant for both the annual town meeting and the special town meeting. If you don't have one, raise your hand, and the tellers who have been sworn in will give you one. I have lived in this town most of my life. I've been attending town meetings, I think I was 10 years old, and for some reason at that young age, looking at town reports and talking with some other folks in town who have been here longer than I have, we never, none of us can remember a year when there have been so many deaths of people who have served this town. I think I counted 14. There's three pages, and I'll just go through the names in order of the chronological order from the date that they passed. The mother of the moderator has no official title, but she was the Pembroke School Committee Secretary for many years, back in the 70s and 80s, Elsie Dodge, who passed away in February. My predecessor, 59-year predecessor, who we honored and buried a year ago at the annual town meeting, John Walsh, who passed away last April. Lee Smith, longtime council and aging volunteer. Rose Egerton, I don't think there are many people in town who don't know Rose. Jim Kill-Collmans, one of our founders of our DPW, former DPW commissioner, passed away in July. Mary Willis, former council on aging, died suddenly in end of July. Barbara Crosby, passed away in August. Pembroke swim team, a staple at these town meetings for many, many years. Jerry Dempsey, who served in many, many capacities for this town, passed away on September 30th. Our former chief teller, Les Damon, passed away in October. Valerie Croon, member of the Pembroke Housing Authority, also a longtime local reporter, passed away in November. Noel Cross, substitute teacher, Pembroke youth soccer coach, passed away in November. Bill Lynch, who was an assessor in the late 70s and early 80s, he passed away in December. Harriet Reed, volunteer extraordinaire with the Pembroke Food Pantry and the Council on Aging, passed away in December. And Ann Landers passed away in December. She was a library trustee in the late 90s and through 2009. So I ask you to just take a moment in silence to remember them and their service to our town and their families. For those who are new, if you are new and you want to raise your hand, I'd love to see how many new faces. That's great. We welcome you. We hope you come back. At the front of the warrant, there is a set of guidelines that you might want to look at, gives you a sense of our procedure. I'll just quickly say that if you want to address the meeting, and you're welcome to do that, we have two microphones, one on either side. We just ask you to state your name and your address for the town clerk to know and reporters. And you always address the meeting through the chair. If we have a number of people speaking, I'll try to alternate and try to go in order that people stood, and I will try to recognize those who have not spoken first. There are, you're welcome to make an amendment to address, if you do make an amendment, I ask you to put it in writing. The only time that you do not have to approach the microphone is when you want to make a point of order. And a point of order is really quite anything. It can be, Mr. Moderator, I'm too cold, I'm too hot, I can't see, I can't hear, I don't know what's going on. We don't know, we don't want anyone not to know what's going on. So if you have a question about a vote or a procedure, just shout out, Mr. Moderator, point of order, and I'll recognize you from your chair. If you want to move a question, which is a parliamentary procedure, to end debate, you're welcome to do that, but I do not recognize that from the seats. You have to go to the microphone and wait your turn, and then if you do wish to move to move the question, it's non-debatable, and we'll take a vote right away. If it passes, then that ends debate on that particular article, and we'll go straight to the vote. Tellers have been sworn in, they know their pointed duties and their sections. We do have hearing aid assists available in the front for people who have trouble hearing. I'm told they do help in some circumstances, pick up the auditorium microphones a little bit better, those are out front. And before we, oh, also want to remind you that, as she has been doing since 1976 in the old center school, Carol Dodge is out there selling coffee to benefit the Key Club, and this year we have the Friends of the Council on Aging who are selling lots of goodies. So just what you need to get through a long evening, hopefully it won't be that long, is sugar and caffeine. They're both available out in the lobby. So without further ado, I would like to, for a very brief moment, recognize the chairman of the planning board, Dan Taylor.
Marilyn. I just want to recognize Marilyn for-
Dan, why don't you use the microphone if you-
Is it on? I just want to recognize Marilyn for 20 years of service to the planning board. What day are you leaving?
July 29th.
There you go, and if everybody could just give Marilyn applause.
How many years, Marilyn?
20.
20 years. That's great, congratulations, and you will be missed. I also want to introduce both our state senator and representative are here, they have busy schedules, so we're pleased that they're able to be here at least for the start of the meeting. Our state representative, Josh Cutler, sitting up front. And I know he's here somewhere, it might be out in the lobby, oh, there he is, in the back, our state senator, Vinnie DiMascio. So we appreciate you coming. So already, we use the lottery system, with the exception of Articles Two and Three, which are the wage and personnel schedule and the budget. We tackle those first. Everything else is done by a lottery system. We've got the famous ping pong balls and the famous raffle bin, which we'll use. We do have a special town meeting tonight that's scheduled for 7:30, so when we get close to 7:30, maybe a little bit after, we'll- Seeing none, all those in favor of Schedule D as printed in the warrant, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. As I mentioned, all of the articles are, we take by lottery, except Articles Two and Three, and Article Three is next for the budget, and the chair will recognize Linda Peterson, chairman of the advisory committee.
Mr. Moderator, move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $57,862,383 to fund the operating expenses of the town for the fiscal year 2017, as listed under Appendix A of this warrant, and to fund this appropriation, raise and appropriate from taxation the sum of $56,991,370, and transfer the following sums. Silver Lake Escrow Fund, $155,933. Ambulance Fund, $400,000. Septic Betterment Program, $94,633. Cemetery Funds, $27,872. Recreation Revolving, $17,738. Council on Aging Transportation Fund, $90,000. School Construction Surplus, $73,660. School Athletic Funds, $11,177.
Motion's been made and seconded, and as we historically do, I will take each item by office, and by the way, once again, these are all in Appendix A, so you can follow along, and we'll vote each budget of each office separately. And as I mentioned, there's been a lot of work put into this, but you're the final decision-maker, so it's up to you. If anyone wants to make a motion to amend or has a question, please raise your hand and shout out, and I'll recognize you. I will go through it fairly quickly, but hopefully not too quick that people can't follow along. And I just will mention, before I recognize this gentleman, that the town bylaw states that all votes are to be taken by a show of hands. The chair cheats a little bit on that, so we don't end up all going to the chiropractor the next day. So for these budget items, I will just take a voice vote, but on any of the other items, we'll do a show of hands. The chair, you have to speak through the microphone. Just state your name and-
My name is Colin Dwyer, and I live on 47 Long Hill Road, and I just wanted to know when we get the vote.
We'll vote on each item separately, so you'll vote on each office separately. Okay? So we'll start with the town moderator, wages and salaries, and I'll be reading the very last figure that's printed in your advisory book under Appendix A. Moderator, wages and salaries, $100. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Board of Selectmen, wages and salaries, $9,000. Wages and salaries elected, $9,000. Wages and salaries, $122,425. General expenses, $8,150. Purchase of services audit, $38,500. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the board of selectmen's budget, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Town Administrator, wages and salaries, $136,000. General expenses, $3,525. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Legal, purchase of services, $110,000. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Advisory Committee, wages and salaries, $5,884. General expenses, $572. Reserve Fund, $50,000. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Town Accountant, wages and salaries, $106,815. General expenses, $6,800. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Board of Assessors, wages and salaries elected, $5,400. Wages and salaries, $225,461. General expenses, $35,150. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Treasurer Collector, wages and salaries, $324,461. General expenses, $79,885. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Data Processing, general expenses, $64,475. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Town Clerk, wages and salaries elected, $76,305. Wages and salaries, $50,358. General expenses, $4,320. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Elections, wages and salaries, $40,000. General expenses, $21,000. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Registrations, wages and salaries, $5,600. General expenses, $8,300. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Conservation Commission, wages and salaries, $56,150. General expenses, $935. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Planning Board, wages and salaries, $48,452. General expenses, $2,240. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Zoning Board of Appeals, wages and salaries, $24,474. General expenses, $2,600. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Town Hall Maintenance, wages and salaries, $95,910. General expenses, $126,890. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. I'm sorry, I missed a question. Chair recognizes Paul Dwyer.
Mr. Moderator, the wages and salaries went up by almost $30,000 for the town hall maintenance. Could we have an explanation on that?
Chair recognizes town administrator, Ed Thorne.
Yeah, what we did is, we consolidated the two employees that work in the police department and in town hall into the town hall budget, because we, in the library and the council on aging and the recreation department, we reconfigured the cleaning services, and so that's why that number went up considerably, because we absorbed 60% of the second custodian in the town hall budget.
Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor of the town hall maintenance budget, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Police Department, wages and salaries, $2,989,225. General expenses, $340,502. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor-
Mr. Moderator, you read that as 225, it's 228.
I'm sorry, thank you. Wages and salaries, $2,989,228. He needs that three bucks. General expenses, $340,502. Any discussion? All, thank you for the correction. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Fire Department, $2,843,650 for wages and salaries. General expenses, $192,500. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Inspection Services, wages and salaries, $188,059. General expenses, $12,400. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Emergency Management, wages and salaries, $2,594. General expenses, $9,511. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Dog Officer, wages and salaries, $48,419. General expenses, $7,600. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Pembroke Public Schools, $31,332,029. Although, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Is the new superintendent here, can I ask her just to stand, just to be recognized? New superintendent, Erin Obi, just appointed officially. Department of Public Works Budget, wages and salaries, $852,873. General expenses, $335,186. Snow and Ice, $100,000. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Street Lighting, general expenses, $95,000. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Board of Health, wages and salaries, $117,338. General expenses, $7,610. Purchase of Services, Nursing, $20,000. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Council on Aging, wages and salaries, $177,339. General expenses, $49,810. Senior Tax Program, $5,000. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Veteran Services, wages and salaries, $65,879. General expenses, $2,300. Benefits and Medical, $170,000. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Commission on Disabilities, general expenses, $705. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Library, wages and salaries, $474,453. General expenses, $91,800. Books, $86,000. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Lydia Drake Library, general expenses, $2,285. Is a question? If you could just state your name.
My name is Joanne Tavoris. I live on Lady Slipper Circle. I've been a volunteer at the Lydia Drake Library for over 10 years. I request, I respectfully request that the amount of money that's appropriated for our library be increased to $5,000 a year. This, for the 10 years I've been there, it's the same amount of money. It's a historically significant building. I think that some more money would be appropriate for us.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further, any discussion? On the motion by Joan-
Joanne.
Joanne Tavoris-
Yes.
To amend the Lydia Drake Library budget to $5,000. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, no. Please raise your hand. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted.
Thank you.
Recre-, excuse me, Recreation Commission, wages and salaries. Actually, could you write that down for us, so the clerk has it, and just give it to one of the tellers, and we'll have it. Recreation Commission, wages and salaries, $87,678. General expenses, $6,220. Park Maintenance, $7,360. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Community Center, wages and salaries, $17,953. General expenses, $32,346. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Herring Fisheries, general expenses, $1,800. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Town Landing, wages and salaries, $42,379. General expenses, $1,750. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Town Clock Winder, $1,457. Is there any discussion? There was last year. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. All those who know who the Town Clock Winder is, raise your hand. I can't remember. What's his name? Ed, what's his name? Bob Heinz, right, Heinz. Town Memorial Committee, general expenses, $5,910. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. South Shore Women's Center, general expenses, $3,500. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Plymouth County Cooperative, general expenses, $107. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Historical Commission, general expenses, $2,000. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Maturing Debt Principal, general expenses, $2,459,443. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Maturing Debt Interest, general expenses, $939,925. Any discussion? Chair recognizes Doc Yakabuchi. Please, you're going to have to use the microphone now, please.
Doc Yakabuchi. Why the big jump from 768 to 939?
Town recognizes our town accountant, Michael Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Most of that jump is attributable to the school roof debt exclusion.
Any further discussion on that item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Short-term interest, $67,000. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Plymouth County Retirement, general expenses, $3,026,915. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Unemployment Compensation, $75,000. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Group Health Insurance, $7,377,433. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Group Life Insurance, general expenses, $20,000. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Medicare Tax, $470,000. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Last but not least, property and liability insurance, general expenses, $700,000. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, the ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. So, and I think we'll just take one vote on the entire budget as moved by advisory. Just spent $57,787, $57,787,107. All those in favor of the budget as amended? No? Town recognizes, the chair recognizes town accountant, Michael Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just for the record, with that addition, it's $57,865,98.
So the total is $57,865,98.
Correct.
All those in favor of the motion by advisory as amended on the floor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. So, we move on to the lottery system, and the first item of business is Article 20.
Mr. Moderator-
Mr. Moderator, move that the town vote to amend zoning bylaws.
Town recognizes Dan Taylor, Chairman of the Planning Board. I just have to recognize you, that's all. Just a minor item. Article Twenty is on, give people a chance to find it in their warrant, is on page twelve of your warrant. Chair recognizes the Chairman of the Planning Board, Dan Taylor.
Thank you. Move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the town of Pembroke to address the use in dimensional regulations in industrial districts A and industrial district B by deleting the strike-through text and inserting the bold text as printed under Article Twenty of this warrant.
Is there a second? Chair hears second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, this takes a two-thirds majority, so we'll try it with a show of hands. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, thank you. Town Council, the Planning Board has voted on this item, and the chair has been informed, and then the Planning Board has voted to support the article as required by state law. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion by the Planning Board on Article Twenty, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted, having reached the necessary two-thirds needed for passage. So, we will take, I'll entertain a motion to recess the annual town meeting, so we can go to the special town meeting. Mr. Boyle moves that the annual town meeting stand in recess. Is there a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. The annual stands in recess, and we'll move to the special town meeting. Again, if you need a special town meeting warrant, please raise your hand, and the tellers will provide you with one. For those who are new, we're very high-tech in this town. This is a margarine jar from nineteen seventy-three, I think. First article is Article Nine in the special, which is the last one. And the chair recognizes Steve Curley from advisory.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we take no action on Article Nine.
Motion's been made and seconded. Chair recognizes Steve Curley.
Mr. Moderator, the, actually, the parties came to an agreement since this was first done, and so it's no longer needed.
So, the motion's made to take no action, which means at least the town officials are in agreement that we need not take any action in this article. But again, it's up to you. All those in favor of the motion by Steve Curley to take no action on Article Nine, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. Next article in the special is Article Four. Which is on page two. And the chair recognizes. Chair recognizes Jim McCollum from advisory.
Mr. Moderator, move that three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is appropriated for the purpose of purchasing trash receptacles for automated trash pickup. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectment, is authorized to borrow three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars under general law, Chapter Forty-four, Section Seven, Subparagraph Nine, or any other enabling authority, and that the Board of Selectment is authorized to take any other action necessary to carry out this project.
Motion's been made and seconded. Chair recognizes.
My name's Gail McSweeney. I live at two fifty-eighth Centus Street. Back in two thousand and fourteen, we had a reduction on our bills of seventy dollars. So, for the past two years, we've had a hundred and forty dollars off on our bills. The trash and recycling are a self, it's a self-funding account. It's not meant to generate taxes or to pay interest. I would like to suggest that, at this point, the town reconsider, as if you take three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, divided by seven thousand barrels that we're looking for for trash receptacles, it comes down to forty-six dollars. I don't understand why we would not, at this point, take and put a one-time charge of forty-six dollars on the residents where our bill is down versus incurring the interest and the taxes on a quarter of a million dollars. I would like to suggest that the, they review this and that the residents have a chance to pay this out of our upcoming fiscal year trash and recycling bill.
Chair recognizes former selectman, Bob DiMarzo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Two things, just to address that last comment. One way or the other, the taxpayers are paying for it. If it's on your tax bill, you get to deduct it. If you're paying it through your trash bill, it's not deductible to anybody. So, it's a wash. It's coming out of one pocket or the other. But the question I have is, does that mean that each household will only have one trash barrel? Can they use other trash barrels? Or are we limited to just the one fifty-five gallon, which I assume is fifty-five gallon?
Chair recognizes town administrator, Ed Thorne.
Mr. DiMarzo, in town meeting. Couple of months ago, the Solid Waste Committee came up with a plan for the Board of Selectmen who wholeheartedly endorsed this. What we did when we went to an enterprise account under the direction of the town accountant and the Department of Revenue report, is that we spent that money, any surplus that we had, we spent in order to pay for the one point six million dollars that it takes to run our trash program here in town. That surplus now has been depleted, and that's why your trash bills went down from two hundred and seventy to two hundred dollars, because we used that surplus for a couple of years. Now, the trend for communities statewide and nationwide is to become an automated system. And what we'll do is, we will probably roll this program out in July, similar to what the recycling program was. Each household will be given a sixty-four gallon trash barrel. Right now, we're gonna adhere to the Board of Health regulations from twenty-five years ago, so that individual households will be allowed to have an additional sixty-four gallons that they'll be able to have picked up, which is equal to what the current regulations are in town.
It's a lot of trash.
Lot of trash. And I think a lot of people will understand that that sixty-four gallon toter that you have for recycling, you used, you filled that up from a recycling standpoint, and hopefully you won't use as much trash, because it costs us less to dispose of recyclables at twenty-five to thirty dollars a ton than it is of trash, which is fifty-five dollars a ton.
Chair recognizes Dan Fubigo from the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And to town meeting, just to let you know, we, the Board of Selectmen, the town administrator and accountant, we had the opportunity through good negotiations with our trash hauler and the ultimate dumping site, to give the town a seventy-dollar tax cut for the last few years. We had a choice to, to hold that in a fund in case a day like today would come when we needed to bump those rates up. But we took the stance that, give the taxpayers the money now, put it in their pocket, knowing at some day, at some time, the hauling rates and charges would go up. So, we took the stance to give everyone a tax cut at that time, and now we, it's just time to raise the rate. So, we enjoyed it while we could.
Chair recognizes Jean.
Hi, Jean Gilaudy, Mountain Avenue. I don't wanna sound like a jerk, but I hate this. All I can picture is little old ladies, like my mother. No offense to my mother, she'll kill me if she heard me saying that. She's had enough time dragging her barrel out to the curb, and it's this big. A hundred and eighty-seven thousand gallon thing of trash would be, I think, extremely difficult for some people to drag out and drag back. And I just think three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is a lot of money for trash barrels. And, so, I have my barrel outside of the road, and somebody hits it, so now I'm gonna call the town and say, oh, my forty-six dollar toter got trashed, I need another one? Is that how it's gonna, and who's gonna be in charge of taking care of all this? And it just seems like a huge headache to me.
Town, Chair recognizes Ed Thorne.
Our contract with Easy Disposal, who assumed the contract of Mike Del Preet, as we all know, they've agreed to have a eight-hundred number that they will, that people will contact, and our contract with them will have them repair any toters, so that, you know, so they will be responsible for repairing any injured toters. If you know, we've been in, we're in the fifth year now of recycling toters, and we've repaired very little. And in fact, we also provided for about five hundred, thirty-five gallon toters for people that think that the sixty-four gallon toter was too big. And we'll be doing the same thing there.
Chair recognizes Gail McSweeney.
I understand the times have changed, and we're going to the lifteons, not only with recycling at this point, but we will be going forward with trash. A lot of the companies are moving forward. It eliminates personnel that the company has to deal with. But I still think that to charge the residents a forty-six dollar one-time fee over a long-term debt of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, that's a quarter of a million dollars. And on Article Two, the Board of Health is also, the trash and recycling is also in trouble for two hundred and fifty thousand. Now, we're getting up to a half a million dollars on a self-funding account. I just don't understand why we would borrow a quarter of a million dollars for totes. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none. This does require a two-thirds, so we'll try it first with a show of hands, if it's too close, and we'll do a standing vote. All those in favor of the motion to borrow by advisory on Article Four, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. Who's not voting, raise your, it's too close, we'll have to do a standing vote. So, I will ask the tellers to jump up, and I'll ask all those in favor of the article as moved by advisory to stand and remain standing until counted. And once again, I remind the tellers that when they bring their tally sheets up to state
Mary Hill, twenty-eight, yes.
Judy Graham. Thirty-four, yays. Judy Graham.
Beth Kitson, seventeen, yay.
All those voting no, please stand and remain standing. If you're at the back, you won't be counted, and if you're in the visited section, you won't be counted.
Hey, Ed, what's the delta going automated to? We have to explain that.
Mary Hill, thirty, no.
Beth Kitson, twelve, no.
Judy Graham, twelve, thirteen, no.
Cheryl Nogla, twenty-two, no.
Yeah, it cost four hundred thousand dollars a year more. I'll reconsider it, and I'll explain more. I didn't, I didn't think, I thought it was so easy, that I didn't, I didn't think I needed any more explanation, but I'll reconsider it and speak to it.
On this matter, one hundred and sixteen have voted yes, seventy-seven no. The motion loses, having failed to declare, failed to achieve a two-thirds. So, it's still on the table. I'm sorry, well, the motion isn't, wait a minute. Chair will be in a brief recess.
Mr. Speaker?
The, the motion is lost, and the article fails. So, we'll move on to the next article in the special, Article Two. Article Two, page one. Chair recognizes Steve Curley from advisory.
Mr. Moderator, I move to appropriate and transfer the sum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from free cash to supplement the amounts voted under Article Five for solid waste general expenses of the April twenty-eighth, two thousand and fifteen annual town meeting.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Chair recognizes Steve Curley.
Mr. Moderator, as most people know, the original hauler that we had went bankrupt, and we, when we went out and found somebody else, it was at a considerably higher amount, and that's created a deficit in the account.
Any further discussion? Seeing none on the motion by advisory in Article Two, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted.
Mr. Moderator?
Chair recognizes Arthur Boyle.
I'd like to reconsider Article Four. We did not do a great job explaining that, and I'll take some responsibility for that.
Well, the chair, the chair would actually state that reconsideration is not in order. Reconsideration is only a motion that can be used if there is some substantial new information that's been offered that would change people's vote.
We can give you some new.
Or if there is an error.
We can give you new information, or additional information.
The meeting will be in a brief recess. The meeting will come to order. The chair will not allow reconsideration unless there is substantial new information, and that is the purpose of reconsideration, not to get another bite at the apple, but to allow people, if there is new information or a wrong figure was passed, to allow them to change their mind. We took a vote, I think the discussion was fairly clear.
Boy, I think the figures will speak for themselves, Mr. Moderator.
I'm sorry?
I think the figures will speak for themselves.
Chair recognizes.
Mr. Moderator, there's a significant monetary figure that was not mentioned in the previous item as to why to go to an automated service. The difference in annual cost of our trash pickup will exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollar difference a year. I sat on seventeen different meetings with the town administrator on that. I don't think the town's aware that that will affect the overall cost of our trash pickup.
Actually, the numbers.
There was ample debate on this motion, and the chair is gonna stand firm in its motion and its ruling not to allow reconsideration on this item. Reconsideration is not a tool to be used to try to change people's mind if there is no substantial information. Meeting will be in a brief recess. Meeting will be in a brief recess. After further discussion with town council, the chair will accept a motion to reconsider. And again, reconsideration in the past has been used as a way to lock things in, and it's traditionally, according to town meeting time, which is the rules that we follow, someone who is on the prevailing side has to move reconsideration. Now, there's no way to do that to ascertain whether someone's on the prevailing side because we don't do a roll call. And so the chair has taken a rather strict interpretation of what reconsideration should be. But the Board of Health agent, I think, has made a compelling argument that we can reconsider. So has anybody moved reconsideration?
Mr. Moderator, I rise to move reconsideration of Article Four.
Mr. Boyle moves reconsideration. Is there a second? All those in favor of reconsideration, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it and I declare it so voted. Chair recognizes Arthur Boyle.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We should have explained this in better detail because it's, as Lisa Colley pointed out, $150,000 difference, actually, we're going to be probably closer to $400,000 difference. It's an automated system where it'll be one person on the truck picking up the todes that we have now, the green ones that are for recyclable materials, and there'll be another toter provided that will be for the trash. And as Mr. Thorne explained, there will be the availability of a second toter. You can actually purchase them right at Home Depot or Lowe's or any of those places because there's a truck that comes in with a hook, picks up the trash, dumps it over the top, as you've probably seen in other cities and towns, and we will save over $400,000 for the town in the solid waste. If we go with the plan as it stands, it will substantially change the cost of trash disposal. And if I can make a point, I agree with Mr. DiMarzo, and I hope he doesn't faint when he hears that. I would rather see it on my tax bill than as a fee because it's tax deductible and it would be spread out over four quarters, so it would barely be noticeable, the $46. And not that we don't have it, but some people don't have $46 to spend all at one time. And I'll ask my colleagues if they have anything to add.
Well, I'm going to recognize first the gentleman who's been standing over here at the microphone, if you could state your name.
Sure, I'm David Sullivan, I live on Little's Avenue. I guess it would be helpful for me to understand the difference in cost if we raised the rates of town residents to pay for this versus borrowing, because I guess it seems to me that borrowing would require us to pay more, but I don't understand if the amount that we would save by having to be deductible is higher than the amount we're paying in interest.
Chair recognizes town accountant Michael Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. One of the hardest things to do as an employee is to decide whether you're saying too much or too little, so I should have spoken up more about this. Over the 18, 20 years that we have charged for the trash fee, we built up a surplus in order to cap the landfill. And what we have done over the past two years, once given that the landfill had been capped, is use what it was left of that surplus to artificially, in some ways, reduce the rate from where it should have been to about $275, down to 200. Now that surplus is gone, we have to raise the rate regardless of what we do on this one issue. We have to, regardless of what we do with bins, we have to raise the rate back up to 275. So now the question becomes, because we can save about $20,000 a month by having a machine do the work of a man, which is reality, now we have the question, we need to buy these bins. Do we pay for the bins all at once or do we pay for the bins over five years? What the selectmen are proposing is that we pay for the bins over five years. I think rate on that's about 1, 1 and 1/2 percent, so it's not a lot of money as far as interest. So if we don't borrow this money, the 270,000, if we don't borrow this money under Article Four on the annual, we're going to have to either increase that budget by $250,000 and increase the trash fee from 275 to about 330, or we're going to have to add 325,000 to the budget, buy the bins all at once, and increase the fee one year from 275 to about 350.
It occurs to the chair, we actually do not have a motion on the table. It's been reconsidered, but we don't have a motion before, so I'd ask Steve Curley from advisory to once again make the motion, so we actually have something on the floor. Chair recognizes Steve Curley from advisory.
Mr. Moderator, I move to appropriate and transfer the sum of, get the right one here.
$325,000.
300, okay. Move that 325,000 is appropriated for the purpose of purchasing trash receptacles for automated trash pickup, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow $325,000 under General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, Subchapter 9, or any other enabling authority, and that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to take any other action necessary to carry out this project.
Motion's made and seconded. We'll go to the side first, the chair recognizes Gail McSweeney.
I would just like to reiterate that this $46 or you're saying that there's, we're getting a couple of numbers here, like 275, I believe we're dealing with 325, but you're talking a one-time fee of $46. If you need to compensate out of that, certainly maybe $50 on a one-time fee versus a five-year loan makes a lot more sense to me. Thank you.
Chair recognizes gentleman to my right.
My name's Richard Camola, Level 229 Plummer Street. My question is to the board, why did they fail, why weren't they as clear as they are now as they, and not in the article?
Chair recognizes.
Make it crystal clear so everyone understands it. Just be upfront with people.
Chair recognizes Dan Tribuco from Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Well, I have to apologize to town meeting because this, this board, the town administrator, town accountant have been working on this for all of, over six months. So we have all this information in our heads and we didn't express it. So I apologize that we didn't get the message out to everyone. See, our previous trash hauler was a, was a small company and he had manual labor, taking the trash barrels in, you might have seen him around, and he's no longer in business. We needed to go out to another trash hauler and we interviewed several, and every one of the new, the new trash haulers have an automated system. They, they're going to have trucks with the automated arm, whether we have the trash barrels that will take them or not. So if we do not get these todes that fit the arms, then the bill is going to be, it was $400,000 extra per year. So that's, that's information, vital information that, I apologize, we did not get out to you folks before the initial vote was taken.
And I get that.
Well, you can't allow, you get to speak through the chair. I have to go to the next person. Chair recognizes Bob DiMarzo.
I think we've heard three numbers, 400,000, 240,000, the town accountant, and 150,000. So let's take the middle number, 240,000, 250,000, although I respect Mr. Boyle's math. I have questioned his math in the past, he's a good friend. It's very simple. If what you folks are telling us is we spent $325,000 spreading that over 20 years, so some people down the road will be paying for it, we're going to save $250,000 a year. Each year, we're going to be saving 250,000. The decision is simple. We need to do this because otherwise it's going to cost us a lot more every year, every year, till we decide to bite the bullet as many other towns and cities have done. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Patrick Chilcot from the school committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very simple question, you're going to give me one toter. If I need a second one or if I have to put out a second barrel, I mean, I've got four barrels already that I don't think now I can use, do I have to buy another one?
Chair recognizes Dan Tribuco.
Mr. Moderator and to Patrick, the town, the town's proposal is to provide one toter per household. The volume of trash in that, in those toders, those todes, two todes equals the volume of trash that the Board of Health allows at this time. The town is only proposing to, to provide one toter, so if your family is large enough that needs a second toter, then, then yes, the household would have to pay for that and it'd have to be in the same sizes and dimensions, but they do sell them, they're ubiquitous in Lowe's, Home Depot.
Chair recognizes Jim McCollum.
Mr. Moderator, perhaps I'm misunderstanding. A previous speaker who spoke against this program was not speaking against the automated system. She was simply speaking against buying the whole thing in one lump sum and suggested that we put $46 on our trash bill for our first one. Was not scrapping the automated system, so we still would have the savings of the automated system, we would just pay $46 one time upfront.
Chair recognizes not previously having spoken, and I apologize, I'm forgetting your name.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm speaking for Cheryl O'Reilly, 30, Cerro Lab, Cerro Lab, sorry. Her question is, could each house buy their own totes at Lowe's? They have the same, on the back of the tote, hook on the back of the tote and is the same size. To the selectmen, please.
Chair recognizes Dan Tribuco.
The answer is, the answer is yes. The todes that the town intends to purchase are the same that can be bought at a home goods store. To, to, a previous question, Mr. Moderator, whether we borrow this money and spend, spend it over five years or hit, hit the residents in one tax bill. After much discussion between this board, town administrator, and town accountant, we thought it was more favorable to, to the majority of citizens, especially, especially the elderly folks and the young folks that are just starting out, have a young family and budgets are tight, you know, the $45 single time hit might not seem a lot to many of us, but it is to, to some folks. And at the just over 1% interest rate, we thought it was the best way for the majority of citizens to borrow $325,000 to provide an automated system for, for everyone.
Is there any, chair recognizes.
Becky Colletta, 23 Vernon Hall Drive. If we each bought our own receptacles or totes, would those be serviced by the company? I assume that contractually, the company would want us to have a uniform set of totes, that they tend to take responsibility for repair, but I could be wrong. The other thing is, I think we're making a big issue about small money here. The difference between paying $45 outright or borrowing this money, if the town accountant is saying that the interest rate on the bond is something like 1.5%, then we're talking about $4,600 a year divided by 7,000, which is about 69 cents per tote. And I think if we do that over five years, it's less than the $4 or $5 that the previous speaker was willing to say, $46 or $50 per tote gets added to our trash bill. I actually agree with Mr. DiMarzo that I'd rather have it be part of my tax bill where I can deduct it and probably save more than the 1.5% a year than to pay the $45 outright as a fee, because the fees are really just taxes under another name.
Chair recognizes Lisa Colley.
To answer the previously asked questions, yes, anyone can buy a toter up at Lowe's. They are currently 89.99 plus tax, so just over $90. They're not made to the same grades or specs as a custom order that this town places with toter. This town gets the price of $46 through the mass buy contract, tax-free. Therefore, the cheapest toter you can possibly purchase for your home is through the town, through a massive contract that comes out on a, a large truck and is delivered to your doorstep. No easy will not support or maintain privately purchased todes. The only todes that they will be maintaining, fixing, and replacing if they are damaged are the ones with the town seal on the side. You are not just buying a toter, you are buying a service. You're buying a discount on that service and you're buying maintenance on the toter itself, so you have one phone call to one company to handle all your trash needs and any problems you have with your toter. When you think about what you're buying for $46, you're certainly not going to get that insurance from Lowe's on your 90-plus tax toter, you're certainly not going to get that level of service. And again, we don't have to buy the todes, but if we don't have it in place for July 1st, come July 1st, there is an additional almost $250,000 a year to have two people ride the back of the truck and put out whatever barrel we want. The choice is very simple. Yes, it's, it was reviewed by a committee to purchase over five years. Yes, we can purchase it at one time and put out that bill that way as well, but the economic money makes sense. These bins will pay for themselves in two and a half years.
Chair recognizes this gentleman here, if you could state your name.
Michael Fay, 3, Victoria Lane. I just had a question if, I was curious if the one, after we purchased the first tote, we were able to purchase the second tote from the town for the $46 fee or the $120 fee from Lowe's?
Chair recognizes Arthur Boyle.
Yes, you would be able to purchase another one from the town.
Chair, after all these years, I should remember your name, I'm sorry.
James Kincaid, 69 Spring Street. Could I please move the issue?
The motion to move the question has been made. It is not debatable. All those in favor of moving the question, which ends debate, will go right to a vote, please raise your hands. All those opposed, please raise your hands. The ayes have it and the motion passes and will go to the vote. We'll try it with a show of hands, I suspect we'll have to have a standing vote, and that's okay. All those in favor of the motion by advisory, which was the original motion that didn't pass for a lack of a two-thirds, it's up again. You've authorized us to reconsider it, so we'll take it up again. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it. And it reached the necessary two-thirds. I declare it reached the necessary two-thirds needed for passage, and the chair obviously was in error and there was additional information that was.
Mr. Moderator, if I may.
Chair recognizes Mr. Boyle.
I just want to thank the voters of Pembroke for seeing that the selectmen are not infallible and that we do occasionally make a mistake, and we apologize for the mix-up in information and appreciate the support.
Well, and so does the moderator. Next to Articles, Article Six. On page two, the special warrant, and the chair recognizes Stephen Walsh from advisory.
Move to initiate the process to aggregate electrical load pursuant to mass general law, C164, Section 134, and further inconsistent therewith to grant the Board of Selectmen authority to research, develop, and participate in a contract or contracts to aggregate the electricity load of the residents and businesses in the town and for other related services independently or in joint action with other municipalities, retaining the right to individual residents, businesses to opt out of the aggregation.
Motion's been made and seconded by advisory. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Moderator?
Chair recognizes former selectman Paul Dwyer.
I'd just like to know, who would be negotiating these contracts on, I guess, our behalf as the citizens, because I know the selectmen's track record with these things, such as the SOLA project where Son Edison is now bankrupt, hasn't gone well. So who are the experts that are going to be negotiating on our behalf?
Chair recognizes Dan Tribuco.
Mr. Moderator, if town meeting will allow, we do have the company here, and if the town meeting would allow them to come and speak, do you need a vote on that, Mr. Moderator?
Chair recognizes, the question is, there is some non-residents who are being asked, will be asked to speak, and maybe that requires a nine tenths? No, four fifths? Majority? Just majority, okay, the chair is in error. So the, it's, the meeting needs to give a four fifths of, of majority, needs to vote in favor of allowing a non-resident to speak. So before we put it to a vote, I recognize the chair of the selectman Dan Tribuco to So before we put it to a vote, I recognize the chair of the selectman Dan Tribucco to explain who the non-residents are.
Yes, not the chair, but I will speak for the vote, on behalf of the voter selectmen. Mr. Moderator, I move that town meeting allow a non-resident to speak on behalf of this, this article. These are the folks that would be representing the town and they have the information that all the folks here seek.
Motion's been made to allow, can we provide us with the gentleman's names?
Colonial Power.
Colonial Power. All those in favor of allowing experts in this article to speak, please raise your hand. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. And I'll recognize, if you could state your name.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Bernard Lynch and I'm here representing Colonial Power Group. I want to thank town meeting for the opportunity to, to present to you on this article tonight. Essentially what this article refers to is a process known as municipal aggregation, which was put in place in nineteen ninety-seven here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to allow for more competition in the purchase of electricity. Up until that time, utilities essentially generated the electricity or went off and bought whatever they needed and then they also distributed that electricity. What the legislature, the governor did back in nineteen ninety-seven was put in place a system whereby consumers could go out and shop around and get better pricing, if they could. And the utilities no longer were actually generating electricity or owning the generation of electricity. They were simply there to carry the electricity over the wires and distribute it into your homes and businesses. What the law also provided is that municipalities, cities and towns could aggregate their residents and businesses to secure better pricing. Since that time, about one-third of the communities in Massachusetts have chosen to aggregate. The benefits are that you can get better pricing, you can get more stable rates. Instead of the whipsaw type of changes you see now, right now, the utilities are allowed by regulation to go out to bid twice a year to provide electric, or buy electricity that they can then provide to the default customers that they have. Those customers that have not gone out and secured a separate bid on their own. What happens when you go out only twice a year with a date set by regulation is it doesn't matter what the market is doing at that particular day and the utilities really don't care, because they don't make anything on the electricity, they only make money on the distribution of that electricity. With aggregation, the communities can choose when to go out into the market. They can choose to not buy electricity, but they can choose to buy electricity if the rates are favorable. So you get stable rates, you get savings and you get a choice, which doesn't current, really doesn't currently exist. When you buy your electricity now, you simply sign up with the utility and what you, they give you is what you get. So under this program, you'll be able to stick with that, opt out of that, or get back into the system, whatever makes the most financial sense for you as residents. And this is all being done on your behalf. Now Colonial Power Group was chosen by the Old Colony Planning Commission to do this aggregation. A number of your neighboring communities have done this. They've already voted in, I was in Halifax last night, they voted unanimously to do this. Bridgewater has voted to do this. Dexbury, Plymouth, Kingston, several others. But again, this is being done in communities across the state and it's really picked up steam in the last couple of years as we see spikes in electricity rates going up. That's it in a nutshell. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Chair recognizes Dan Tribucco.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Folks, I am very much in favor of this and, and, and I, I hope you pass this and, and you need to know, when I first heard this, I was very skeptical. I look upon this type of plan like, like a snake oil salesman coming into town. Honest to God, I do. So I was very skeptical and we had several meetings with these folks from Colonial Power. I've done a lot of research on my own through the state. The state has a lot of published information on this and, and I still wasn't satisfied. So I went to several regional meetings, starting with the Old Colony Planning Council, and met with folks who have done this. One, one in particular represented Cape Cod and entirety of the Cape, south or east of the canal, is in one group for municipal aggregation. And as the gentleman explained, the, here's one of my biggest doubts first, just so you know, that I couldn't understand at first how the people that own the power lines, National Grid, they own the power lines, how can I buy power off of their lines with, and save money? And the, and the reason I found was very simple. National Grid owns the lines that will always charge rent on those lines, whether they're charging rent for the electricity they're giving you, or they charge rent for the electricity that someone else is providing. So I got that off the table and I understood that much. And how money is saved by buying electricity that's not in bulk or as bulk as National Grid, that was another conundrum that I couldn't understand at first. How can National Grid with that buying power not be able to outbid us as a small town? And this gentleman alluded to it, that they can only buy power twice a year and the electric suppliers know that date. So every year, I'm not saying this is a conspiracy, but every year on that date that they have to buy electricity, the rates spike. So keep, keep that in mind. If we adopt this plan, we can buy at off-peak price rates. So these folks here from Colonial Power, they are, they're in it to make money. And the way they make money is they make one tenth of one cent per kilowatt hour. That's their fee. And even with that fee, being a for-profit company, even with that fee, I've been told the average, the average household in a town like us, and it's, you know, it ranges from, from town to town because there are different programs, but the average household, it can save from two hundred and fifty to six hundred dollars. So it's a modest savings, but the Board of Selectmen, town administrator, town accountant, seen this plan and wanted to present it to you folks. It's, it's a, it's a modest amount of money, but heck, the last article, we were just talking for about twenty minutes about saving forty-five dollars. So if we can save, save you, you know, a few hundred dollars a year, that's what we want to do. Another part that's positive of this plan is that if the town votes for it and we, we adopt this program, everyone is automatically enrolled in the program, there's nothing that you have to do. But if you don't like it for some reason, whether you don't trust it, or you don't think you're saving enough, or you think you can save more by staying with National Grid, every one of us can opt out. And you can opt back in if, at any time, the residents can opt in or out if you don't like the plan. So we, we are not, we are not binding anyone. You have the option to, to be in it or out of it, but you will be in it automatically if we do adopt this. So that's, that's a lot said and it, please, if there are any questions for the Board of Selectmen or even these folks while they're here, ask, ask, because it's a complicated subject and, and I had to research it for several months to, to know what I know, so please ask.
Chair recognizes James Kincaid.
Thank you. Two years ago, or two or three years ago, we lost power for six days and all the towns that had public power companies got their power back within one day and we're paying more than they are, the more than the, the towns that have public power. Is there any way we can get our power, a more reliable source of power? I think that's what I'm trying to say.
Chair recognizes Dan Tribucco.
Yes, I, I appreciate the question, sir. The, the lines will be owned and maintained by National Grid. Any, any power disruption or a pole or wire down is still going to be main, maintained by National Grid, because don't forget, we're paying rent on their lines. They own the lines, whether they're supplying the electricity or for buying them from somewhere else. And to the other point, you mentioned public electrical companies. There are only a handful of towns that have that, Hangham, Braintree Power and Light. There's, there's only a small handful of towns in Massachusetts that have their own municipal lights and because they're so small and so in-house, they, they get theirs up and, up and running faster. And there's a state law that no town can do that any longer. Those, those towns all got their own municipal power supply back when Thomas Edison was literally alive and operating.
Chair recognizes Bob DiMarzo.
A few questions. Obviously, this is something that's going to affect the whole town, so we, I think we need to get as much information as we can. On the face of it, it seems to make sense, but I was under the understanding, I could be wrong, that if you opt out of the National Grid and try to go back in, you may forfeit some grandfathering of, of rates that you had, and I don't know if that's true or not, but I'd like to have that addressed. Is there protection for low-income families? Under National Grid, if somebody is low-income, they're in the middle of winter, they're two months behind in their electric, they cannot be shut off. I don't know if that will hold true for this, because we need to make sure and they also have rates that are more attractive than, than the standard rate. How long of a contract would the town have with this company? And last, many people are, are doing solar on their houses. Is net metering available for this or will that be part of the automatic process that you're automatically, if you're net metering now, you're automatically enrolled with a new company?
Chair recognizes Dan Tribucco.
Mr. Moderator, I would defer to the folks that are here to, to give us expert advice.
Just state your name, please.
Mark Capadona, Colonial Power.
I'm sorry, Mike?
Mark Capadona from Colonial Power. So I'll, I'll start with the net metering, the net metering deal will stay in place. That contract is with the distribution company, it's a financial transaction. It will, it will work exactly the same way, there will be no change in status, you'll still get your net metering credits, everything will stay the same on a net metering deal. The question about low-income people, all of those benefits that anyone has with the distribution company, all of those things stay in place. If you have budget billing, you have automatic withdrawal, if you're a low-income customer, all of that comes on your distribution side of the bill. National Grid will honor all of those programs at, at this time still, because it's a National Grid program. As far as shut-offs go, nobody will be shut off, that's a National Grid, a distribution company situation. So back in two thousand and fifteen, when rates spiked, lots of people switched and there was what they call a market adjustment on people's bills. That is no longer the case. The Department of Public Utilities ruled that, that, that can no longer happen. So if you leave, there are no, there's no more charges that go on anyone's bill, so there is no favorable rates. Basic service is basic service for all customers and that low-income discount comes on the distribution side of the bill. It's, for National Grid, it's a twenty-five percent discount. It would still continue on with this program.
Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, takes majority vote. On the motion by Stephen Walsh on Article Six, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it and I declare it so voted. Article Seven is the next item of business. Article Seven is on page three and the chair recognizes Jim McCollum.
Mr. Moderator, move that fifty thousand dollars is appropriated for the purpose of conducting a space needs study for the police and fire departments. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow fifty thousand dollars under general law, chapter forty-four, section seven, sub-paragraph twenty-one and/or sub-paragraph twenty-two, or any other enabling authority. And that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to take any other action necessary to carry out this project.
Motion's been made and seconded. The chair recognizes Police Chief Rick Wall.
Good evening. For a lot of people, probably haven't been in the police station and that's a good thing. The building itself is thirty-eight years old and it was built when the town was probably half the size as it is. We really need to do something to move forward, the cell areas built in the, in the seventies and they're basically bars covered with plexiglass, they are not compliant with the state. The juvenile cell that we have in there is certainly not compliant, because it's in this little cell block area that we have. The booking room is now a hallway and because of space, the infrastructure just wasn't designed for the communication needs and the, the needs we had. We had an internet outage and it shut us down for a couple hours the other morning. So we need to look into a space and needs analysis. I spoke with several engineers on how to do it, what's the process to find out, how many square feet do we need for the number of offices in the town with the growth to do it, to do it logical. And, you know, the station's needed to be updated, fixed and/or changed for years. I mean, this is a problem that's been going on for a long time. I went to advisory with my budget to ask for some money and they echoed the same problem that the fire chief is having and they suggested, rightly so, that maybe you could combine your efforts and get the same engineer to study the different properties and, and to come up with a, a solution for us. So that's what we're asking the town to do. It's actually, I was asking for thirty thousand dollars for the police station alone, the engineer said he could do both. We should be able to bid it out at the fifty thousand dollar range to get what we need and that will also give us a couple of options. It's not just going to be, here's what you need, it's going to be options on available properties, it's going to be options on doing something with the properties that you have. So when we come back and, and we know what we need, we're going to be able to come back to the town with some, you know, some engineering facts and some figures and, and, you know, some best practice on how we can move forward. And fire department, if the chief wants to speak to that, is forty years old and, you know, we, we tend to build them and use them until they're worn out or, or no longer serviceable, so.
Chair recognizes Fire Chief Mike Hill.
And that's exactly true. That's exactly what's happened with our building. We have outgrown it by twenty years. It was a station built for four people, we now have six. Its location to me is not very effective to protect the community equally. I think I echo Rick's explanation, really. The building's forty years old, it hasn't had any major renovations, its electrical system is inadequate, as well as its backup generator, it's just, it's time.
Chair recognizes this gentleman. If you could state your name.
My name is Paul Loyce Hell, fifty-four Phil Stone Drive. Does this article have anything to do with Article Five?
I think the chair would answer in the affirmative, but I don't want to speak for anyone. Chair recognizes Chief Wall.
This article on itself, and again, is to take a look at and actually have an engineering company define the problems that we already know, be able to spell them out and be articulate and to give us some solutions and, and some ideas of where we're going to go with that and associate a cost with doing that. I'm not sure if I'm allowed to speak to other articles and everything else, but there is an article in here to purchase a piece of property that we're looking at municipal use for. And, and yes, it does, because location is one of those things that we have to consider. While the police department needs to be centrally located and we need to be visible and we need to be right in the center of town, fire department's struggling getting their, their ambulances and their engines through traffic. It's only going to get compounded when the Route fourteen project gets done and they put those sidewalks on the high street side of the road, all the way down the street, cars aren't going to be able to pull over as well as they can now with a shoulder. So yeah, it does have something to do with that and, and either way, we need the study done, that, that's important and I'm, I'm hoping that the town considers that. Again, I'm not coming here because it's something that I want, I'm coming to you because it's something that we need and this town needs. It's been a, a long time since the infrastructure's been updated or even, you know, looked at. And I know there was a study done for the community center and for all of the, the town hall and everything else several years ago, so I'm pretty sure that the needs are there and they're going to be able to justify that and that there's a lack of space in the buildings that we're talking about. The problem is, we haven't been able to do anything since then and it, we just can't wait anymore. And I believe that there's a couple of capital projects that may be winding up soon, so the timing is good to look at these things and then if, if funding's required, the, the timing may be good to do that.
Is there any further discussion on this article? Chair recognizes Doc Yakabuchi.
Both chiefs, you've already convinced me there's a need for.
Both chiefs, you've already convinced me there's a need for space. I don't see why we have to spend $50,000 to hire somebody to tell us the same thing. You know your profession better than anybody else, you tell us what you need, and we should implement it. I don't think we need to hire somebody to tell us what you've already told us. I manage a piece of property, I don't need to go out and hire somebody to tell me what I need to do to improve my property and what's needed, I'm there, I'm using it, I know better than anybody. I don't understand why we need to spend $50,000 on a professional to tell us what you already know. Let's use that money to accomplish the goal and not to study the goal.
Chair recognizes Bob DiMarzo.
When this study goes on, I hope there will be a lot of citizen participation as well. I think the money is probably well-spent. Public safety, education are two of the most important things that a community is always looking for. So I'm very much in favor of this article. Article Five, not so much. Until we know what the needs are and what the cost may be, I can't support Article Five, but I think this is a very important article to pass, so we can see where we need to go in the future.
Chair recognizes, is it Steve?
Michael Keeley.
Michael Keeley. Formerly a wage and personnel.
Yeah, how you doing? I'd like to just comment on this fact that I was on one of those committees that did the research. The police department, without question, is in a horrible shape for some time now. Something devil needs to be done with that, and apparently the Fire Department's having a strategic placement problem. And unfortunately, we've spent money on this in the past, but if they have an idea now of what they need, it might be the time to spend some more money and find out just what we can do with the police department in particular.
Chair recognizes Becky Coletta of Planning Board.
Becky Coletta, 23 Verna Hall Drive. I would just like to speak in favor of the article, because I think that to undertake projects of this magnitude without professional advice from engineers and similar planners does not make any sense. This is going to be millions of dollars that we're going to be spending, and I think we need to start with a plan, and so I speak in favor of this article.
Chair recognizes Chief Wall.
So we have a concept, and again, we really need to have an engineer back it up. My degree is in law enforcement, so I'm not going to design buildings and all that. I know what we need. I don't know how to get it to that finished stage so that it's going to be compliant to what we have to have. So there is a lot more going on. I mean, there's, we've had a lot of thoughts that we need to kind of confirm and kind of put out there, so if you want to get involved with Article Five and everything else, we talk about that. I looked at the police station, and my first goal was to put an addition on to the police station, two-story addition, and the town accountant told me, you're looking at maybe a 10- or 15-year fix, and then you're going to be in the same problem again. We also share a septic system with the town hall, and I believe the Hatch Building, and we share our parking lot with the town hall. So trying to go up or go bigger on that lot probably isn't going to happen, it's not going to be feasible, plus we don't own a lot of land on the side of, the left side of the building in order to add on. So in order to stay in the center, there really isn't any other piece of parcel in the center other than the Fire Department, and they're having a problem in the center. So big picture would be that Fire Department moves out of the center to a place where they're not bogged down with traffic. Renovate the fire station building and that municipal piece of property for a new police station, and then take the police station, the 10 offices that are handicap accessible on the first floor, and annex that to the town hall. They pick up 38 parking spaces, they're overcrowded, I mean, we had three meetings in one room last night to try and make things work. So everybody wins in this, and again, that piece of property up at the end of Barker Street and at the corner of Route 53 is the gateway to Pembroke, and I can't think of anything more fitting to be on that than a beautiful fire station that we control the traffic in and out of.
Mr. Moderator, point of order.
State your point of order.
We are not discussing Article Five, we are discussing Article Seven, which is a borrowing for the planning.
The chair recognizes the point of order, however, the question has been raised, and there is a link between the two, but I'll ask the speakers to, when we get to that article, we can discuss it more, and we'll keep the attention focused on this article.
Again, Mr. Moderator, I don't feel comfortable in designing a police station, and I'm sure the fire chief does not feel comfortable in doing that. We've researched several firms, there are several great firms out there that will do this study for us, and they'll put together the facts and figures down to the cost per different locations of what, how much it's going to cost per square foot, and how many square foot you're going to need. So that's what I'm looking to do. I really want, I'm not going to spend the town's money unwisely, we're not looking for Taj Mahal, but if something's broke, it has to be fixed, and if we're going to fix it, I'd really like to fix it for 40 years, just in case we don't do anything in the next 40 years, I want it to last. So, very simple.
Chair recognizes Dan Tribucco.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just so all folks are here, because it started going a little bit in circles, this article's only $50,000 for a professional study for both the police and fire departments to assess their needs. That's what this article is, that's all this article is, there's more to talk about in the other article when we get there.
Chair recognizes Doc Yakabuchi.
Everybody keeps referring to Article Five, which is obviously purchase of 9.84 acres, which is going to be obviously a preferred space, so I move that we postpone our consideration of Article Seven until we take up Article Five. If on Article Five we end up buying the land, then we can use the money, the 57, to go to Article Five.
The motion is an appropriate one, and it's up to you to decide whether you want to postpone it or not. So the motion's been made to postpone Article Seven till after Article Five, is there a second? Chair does not hear a second, the motion fails. Is there any further discussion on this item? Article Seven. Hearing none. All those in favor, and this does require a two-thirds, because it authorizes borrowing, all those in favor of the motion made by Jim McCollum on Article Seven, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted, having reached the necessary two-thirds needed for passage. And the chair recognizes Timothy Brennan from Advisory.
Move that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into an agreement with Easy Disposal Recycling LLC for its successors or assigns pursuant to General Law's Chapter 30B, Section 12F, or any other enabling statute to enter into a five-year contract for the hauling of solid waste and recycling from July 1st, 2016, to June 30th, 2021. On such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen determines to be in the best interest of the town.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion by Tim Brennan, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. Chair recognizes the chairwoman of Advisory, Linda Peterson.
Mr. Moderator, move that the sum of $207,286 be appropriated to supplement fiscal year 2016 appropriations and to fund these supplements, that $6,000 be transferred from free cash to the account of Town Hall Wages and Salaries, $66,000 be transferred from free cash to the account for police wages and salaries, $23,600 be transferred from free cash to the account for fire general expenses, $21,686 be transferred from free cash to the account of DPW general expenses, $6,314 be transferred from overlay surplus to the account for DPW general expenses, $20,000 be transferred from DPW wages and salaries to the account for DPW general expenses, $7,500 be transferred from overlay surplus to the account for Lydia Drake Library expenses, $2,700 to be transferred from overlay surplus to the account for Town Landing general expenses, $10,000 be transferred from overlay surplus to the account for unemployment assessment, $40,000 be transferred from the overlay surplus to the account for property and liability insurance, and $3,846 be transferred from overlay surplus to the account for inspectional services, wages, and salaries.
Motion's been made and seconded by Advisory. Is there any discussion on this item? Chair recognizes Doc Yakabuchi.
It's hard to follow that, there seemed to be a lot of discrepancies.
The numbers are not always the same.
Okay. So why weren't they printed and provided to the town meeting in time?
Well, I can't have a private discussion on the side here. The motions that are, the motions are separate from the warrant, so you're not seeing the motions in the warrant, the motions are made on the floor. So there may be some discrepancy between the warrant article and the final motion that's made. Is there any further discussion? Yes.
Jim McGlaughlin, 59 Barney Street.
What's your first name?
Jim McGlaughlin.
Jim McGlaughlin.
Just want to check on inspectional services. I may have heard incorrect, but it sounded like you may have transposed the number. I see $3,486, I think you may have said $3,846.
Eight hundred forty-six.
Eight hundred forty-six.
Eight hundred forty-six.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. On the motion by Advisory, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. Article Five is the next item of business. The aforementioned Article Five. And the chair recognizes John Brown from Advisory.
Move that the amount of $845,000 is appropriate to acquire by purchase, gift, and/or eminent domain for general municipal purposes, including without limitations for future municipal use. Free parcels of land, one located at 369 Washington Street Pembroke, containing 9.84 acres, more or less, and described in the deed recorded with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds in Book 16263, page 83, and the other located at 384 Washington Street, containing 1.89 acres, more or less, and described in a deed of records with said deeds in Book 13179, page 266, and the third located on Washington Street, containing 40,965 square feet, more or less, and described in deed, recorded with said deeds in Book 13611, page 206, and that to meet this appropriation, the sum of $25,000 be transferred from free cash, and that the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow $827,000 under General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, Subsection 3, or any other enabling authority, and that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to execute any documents to take any other action necessary to carry out this project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Chair hears second.
Mr. Moderator, one correction, he read $827,000, it should be $820,000.
For the authorization to borrow, 820, okay. Chair recognizes Chief Wall.
Thank you. I realize this come up awful quick and everything else, but I look at it as a fantastic opportunity. Again, this all started in trying to do an addition on a police station with Advisory Board, and they told us, you guys need to work together and find a better solution, it's probably out there. And in looking at everything that we have, and again, we're going to have the space and needs study, appreciate that, that needs to be done, but there's an opportunity to take a piece of land at the corner of Barker Street and Washington Street, and I look at that where the old Howard Johnsons used to be, and that was the entrance to Pembroke. That's what everybody sees when they come in, and right now, we're seeing a place with mulch and logs and chips, and I'm sure the building inspector can attest to the fact that there's been a lot of complaints about vermin and noise and everything else that goes on there. I mean, it's not an attractive place, and that's not why we're doing this, but the opportunity came up in our discussions on what we need and where we need to be, this might be a really good fit for the Fire Department. So if the chief of police is going to get up here and advocate for something for the Fire Department, it has to make sense. I mean, it just does, you know? There, again, we talked about the deficiencies at the police station, without, there's no parking, there's no space. I mean, we're using attic space to store paper, to store evidence, so we have to have, you know, rat control come in, because it's just a beautiful place for that. And the parking lot's too small, the septic, I mean, I can just go on and on and on, you know, there's no Sallyport to bring prisoners in, we're bringing them in the garage with the bicycles and the motorcycles and tires and property, it's just crazy. So we talked, and we started to figure out, we got a lot of little problems here that maybe we could take care of. It's not overarching, we're not trying to get it all done, but we can take care of the police station needs, fire station needs, the, some of the space needs over at the town hall, and the town owns two of those properties already. What they don't own is a nice piece of property up north. I'm sure the chief's going to talk to you about the new apartments and all the different assisted living program that's going to be up north. It just makes sense, and that's one thing that I can attest to, this town usually tries to do things that make sense.
Chair recognizes Chief Hill.
Yeah, definitely from my point of view, back when I was interviewed, a question was asked of my five-year plan. My five-year plan was to get that station in North Pembroke, either operational or seek another site to build a new station. Quite frankly, almost 50% of our calls go to North Pembroke. Most of our target hazards are up there as far as, you know, fire protection. The larger apartment complexes, the Pembroke Woods, we have Pembroke Hospital, we have two urgent care centers that we respond to daily, we have the highway, North River Plaza, 139. Businesses along 53, it's just where we go. The rest of the town seems to be a bedroom committee, not that it doesn't need as much protection, we don't respond to those areas as much. The opportunity came up for this possible property, a phone call was made to me, would you like to put a station there? I said, absolutely. Blame me for how quick it happened, I guess, I don't know. It's the perfect opportunity for us to start expanding our protection to the community. Now, for those who say, well, you're moving farther away from Bryantville, that's true. The needs and assessment is going to show where we can put another station. But the first, one domino has to drop to get the ball rolling, and this is it. I can only ask for your support.
Chair recognizes Becky Coletta from Planning Board.
My name is Becky Coletta, 23 Verna Hall Drive, and I'm speaking against this motion. I, before I moved to Pembroke, I lived in Hanson, and I was on the Board of Selectmen at a point when we started the process of building a new police station in that town. This is the first time I've ever spoken against a fire or police proposal. I think they're critical to the town, I think that both stations probably deserve a lot of either updating or new building. I'm not against building better and newer facilities. I am against the way that this is proceeding. I feel like tonight, there was a lot of cuteness about municipal purposes, and it wasn't until someone asked that that was even defined as the fire station. It was not originally on the warrant, the amount, and I understand that's because it was still being negotiated. There was no site plan that has been engineered for this property to determine that this property is the proper spot for this type of facility. There's some talk about a spot across the street. There's also, when the police chief and the fire chief came for the planning board, there was a statement that 70% of the calls were in North Pembroke. Tonight, we're hearing 50%. I think the study that we authorized a little while ago would define where the needs are, and when we asked the fire chief at the planning board about servicing the southern part of the town, if this goes forward at this location, there was talk about a facility at Monroe and 27. I think that the town meeting deserves to have a full plan, and a full plan with a picture of what it's going to cost before we knock over one domino. Once we spend $845,000 on a piece of land, it's going to be hard to backtrack and say that we're not going to use that land. That land is a difficult piece of land to develop, it's something that's come before the planning board on multiple occasions, and there have been difficulties with someone coming up with a site plan that works. I don't think it would be an easy piece of property for us to sell if this project ends up being infeasible for the town, or if the needs assessment or the site plan review indicates that that's not the appropriate property for this facility.
Chair is pleased to recognize the unofficial mayor of Pembroke. Chair is pleased to recognize the unofficial mayor of Pembroke.
Yeah, sure.
James Tiny Brown.
As you know, I've been in town for a little while anyways. And the chief says we, fifty percent of his call. I want to tell you something. I am an expert at how many calls go into North Pembroke. If anybody knows where I lived, the last house on the right on fourteen, before you hit fifty-three. When I moved into town, we had four fire stations, four. Naturally, they were all call firemen. I was one of them. I served in that engine three, and we saved an awful lot of lives just putting bodies in station wagons. Now we got ambulances. But with all the building that's in North Pembroke right now, and one thirty-nine, and the traffic that's on fifty-three, all you people that live off the back roads, you should come and stay at my house for a week. And you will find out how much traffic is on fourteen. Fourteen is the main drag for seven towns, if anybody wants to know. We've got six state highways in this town. Our fire department takes care of six state highways, so does our DPW. Our police department is far superior to anything we got, one got one of it, the best chiefs we have. The fire department has saved my life twice, and I don't know how many people here, they have done it. But North Pembroke needs a fire station. The towns around us, Lake Marshfield, have two. Kingston has two. Duxbury has two. Hanover has two. They do not have the traffic that you think it does. You should live on my street, then you know what traffic is. There's five thousand cars a day. There's an accident on fifty-three at least twice a week. I don't want to get my foot too far in my mouth. I got one that's fifteen thousand dollars, that might be good. But now you know where I am. I know this property, I know, I don't want any more taxes either because I'm a senior citizen, I know how everybody feels, but the town is nineteen seventy-three. That's where we are. We are about forty years behind on what our safety should be. I know my schools are good. We got good school, I got grandkids, by the way, going through again, although I shouldn't say anything, I caused this problem, I brought five kids in town. But anyways, now is the time to get the inner structure of this town going. I'm sorry, I don't want to get too far in this, I'll bore you, because this is a subject that really is in my heart.
Thank you. The chair recognizes selectman, Michelle Burt.
No.
I just wanted to speak to some of Becky's comments and add a few of my own.
Got to be careful, I'm an Irishman, I get.
The current fire station is not located in the center of town geographically. Anyone that lives in North Pembroke knows that you can add several minutes onto that call before the fire department gets to your house. The condos located on Barker Square, there are numerous condos there at that property. We're right next door. A firehouse only requires a four-bedroom septic. Anyone that thinks that we can't build on that property, I would like to have a conversation about that. The problems with the prior offers were access. The fire department has a little magic wand, they turn the light on and off. Big sirens, loud noise, everyone gets out of the way. People don't come into the firehouse as they do the police station on foot. We can post a lot of the forms they need online, so there won't be a lot of public people coming in and out. As a resident, I don't want a Walgreens on the gateway to Pembroke. I would rather have a fire station serving the community. We spent five hundred thousand dollars on the loggie property. Has anyone ever been there? There is a map in the lobby that shows the parcel that we are speaking about, and an additional parcel included in the eight hundred and fifty, in the eight hundred and twenty thousand that is located across the street. We had an opportunity to purchase this parcel in between other offers that fell apart. If we don't grab it now, it may be lost forever. I agree with you, Becky, in a dream world, yes, plans, site work, it would have been fabulous to have all that done. Time did not allow it. The residents of Barker Square are here, and I welcome them to speak. The attorney will speak to any legal issues that anyone has questions on regarding the property. The assessor is here if anyone has a question regarding the value. Both chiefs are here to speak to the need of what the town needs. And the accountant is here if anyone has any finance questions. So I'm upset with your comment that the cuteness of the article is being slipped through. Everyone is here, and there'll be no questions left unanswered.
Chair recognizes, I'm sorry, is it Paul? What was your last name again? I'm sorry.
My name is Paul Loyceau, fifty-four Fieldstone Drive. When I found out about this a couple days ago, I went over to Barker Square, pulled in their driveway, there were a couple of people outside, no one there had a clue what I was talking about. Fire station, no one knew, okay? I'm going to go along with this young lady, the cuteness is there, okay? My second thing is, in the last few minutes, we've had the mayor, ex-mayor, wherever he is, I just moved to town, so I don't know the people, okay? And the fire chief already mentioned a second fire station. Why don't we go out, spend the fifty thousand dollars, which we just voted to do, find out what our needs are, then come back and start looking for a piece of property? This seems to be, I think it's the cart before the horse or something like that, okay? I understand this land's been for sale for fifteen years. All of a sudden, people are putting offers in the last couple of months? I don't get it. Thank you.
Chair recognizes this woman here, not previously having spoken. If you could state your name.
My name is June Lane, and I'm a resident of Barker Square Drive, and I'm here with many other neighbors from Barker Square Drive also. And we would really love a fire station at the end of our street. It would really be appreciated, and we'd feel very secure with it. Thank you.
Chair recognizes a woman to my left. If you could state your name.
I'm Kim McKenna from Herring Brook Lane. I just wanted to ask if there's been a study on the land, if it's even buildable. This is all new to all of us here, most of us here, so I don't know if the land's been checked out or not yet.
Chair recognizes Michelle Burt.
No, we didn't have time to do any studies, and unfortunately, we couldn't share the information with you about the purchase price of the offer, because everything had to be transpired in executive session. And once other people find out that a town is looking to purchase a piece of land and put a municipal building on it, the property becomes more valuable.
Chair recognizes gentleman to my right.
My name is Tom Garder, and I live at twenty-five Barker Square Drive, in Barker Square. And I had a number of comments, and I think a lot of them have already been made. There are two categories of comments I have. One is those that relate to the benefits to the town in general, and I think they've been adequately covered by the fire chief and the police chief and others. We are butters to the properties that you're talking about. The properties, as you know, are at the intersection of Route fifty-three, Route fourteen, Washington Street, and Barker Street. And I can understand why some town folk who are paying more taxes perhaps than they care to aren't terribly interested in the problems that might be limited to Barker Square, but some of the problems I'd like to indicate, and I'll try to be quick, relate to our area in general, and they relate to, they derive from the property at, I think it's three sixty-nine Washington Street, that would be acquired under Article five. The, we've talked about the gateway to Pembroke and how we'd all like it to look a heck of a lot better than it does. But one of the properties that would be acquired has been operated in direct violation of rulings of the Pembroke Zoning Board of Appeals and orders of the Pembroke Inspection Department. The result is an eyesore for Pembroke residents in general and visitors to the historic Pembroke Center who have to go by there. The result has also created serious health and safety concerns for anyone living generally in the area through the operation of the property by, I'm not certain whether it's a landscaping service, or they serve landscaping services, but whatever it is, they're manufacturing and creating huge mounds of material, some of which are sent out and covered with chemicals and returned to the piles in the lot. And the piles get bigger and they get more numerous. This is like a rodent infestation, which has been touched on by the chief. There are huge dirt, mulch, and debris piles that are spreading rodents through the general area. Fire hazards from spontaneous combustion within these huge piles were demonstrated within the past couple of years in a fire right across the street in, I believe they were mulch piles, and it was from spontaneous combustion, and it burned for weeks. And to quote one of the neighbors that I've spoken to, it was an everlasting smoldering with chemical fumes and stink that lasted for weeks, as I said. Also, the chemicals that are added to the wood chips that they manufacture on the site have been leaching into the groundwater, which isn't good for anyone in the town, never mind just in our area. So the conclusion, my conclusion is there are two groups of reasons you should consider this. You've been introduced to the reasons that apply to the town in general, and there's a significant area of people there who've been affected by the way the land is currently being operated and used. Thank you very much.
Chair recognizes Paul Dwyer.
Mr. Moderator, we, you know, the purchase of the land, we haven't done a study, a space needs study yet, and I agree that the police and fire stations that we have right now are inadequate, and I understand that. We've appropriated funds for a space needs study to determine what are the needs, and that should include some citing of the property. By the Selectmen's own admission, we don't know if this property is buildable or suitable for our needs. There's a potential that there could be hazardous waste on this site that we would now become responsible for, you know, cleaning up. I think, you know, this article should be postponed or no action taken until we have some of these questions answered, and particularly the space needs study completed.
Chair recognizes health agent Lisa Colley.
Just to answer some of the questions asked, people keep raising the point that this property was for sale for years and nothing happened with it. I'll point out, the animal rescue league was for sale for years and nothing happened with that. Now that's sold and developed. The property across the street was for sale for years, no one touched it. Now it's being developed as condos. There's a lot of tracts of land. How about Cross Street? That's where the assisted living facility is going, was for sale for years, just sold for one point two and was rezoned, and now we're going to have an assisted living facility there. In case anyone hasn't noticed, the economy in Pembroke has bounced back, and it has bounced back hard. Every square piece of land is either being snapped up, developed, or grabbed. Anyone who thinks this parcel was not going to be developed, I had two scheduled and paid for perk tests. I couldn't understand why the engineers failed to follow through with them, and that's when I found out after the fact that the town had entered an agreement for slightly more than those two developers had entered in for. So the misnomer that this property is going to sit there is absolutely wrong. The site has challenges, absolutely, but mentally drive right now. Drive up and down Washington Street in your mind and one thirty-nine. To move a fire station any closer, there's no land left. There's none. Think about it. The site can be developed, and anyone who says the site has challenges, I have one way around all those challenges. It's called forty B, and that's who will buy the site and who will develop it if we don't. Yes, we need to do a lot of planning. A fire station needs to be thought out, planned, engineered, and we will have a chance to come back to town meeting, see those numbers, and see that development, and have an opportunity to vote it up or down. But if this parcel is gone, where are we going to put it? The land's gone. All the major routes on that side of town are all sold and being developed. So it's now or never, and if we don't decide to develop it, we can liquidate the property then, and I guarantee you there'll be a buyer, and chances are, it will appreciate in value.
Chair recognizes, not having previously spoken, assessor Libby Bates.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I happen to be familiar with both these parcels of land because they both lie, and we've been working for a number of years with the property owner because both the parcels lie within the North Pembroke Historic District. But that issue aside, so I am very familiar with this property. I have, over the years, we have had proposals come to us prior to the two thousand eight crash of the market and the housing industry and the downturn. We had two active proposals come before the historical commission for strip malls at that site. We don't have any authority to make a determination as to use, only as to what it's going to look like. We all know what it looks like. Pardon the French, it looks like hell right now, and it's getting worse and worse. But I would like to speak to the fire chief and to kind of concur with Tiny Brown. He talks about five thousand cars a day. Well, I live on Route fifty-three in North Pembroke, and they did a study about ten years ago when they were, probably a few years even before that, when they were reconfiguring that, the layout of that intersection. The state did a traffic study, and back then, the number was twenty-one thousand cars a day went up and down Route fifty-three. And shortly thereafter, because of budget constraints, they closed the North Pembroke Fire Station, which at that time was manned twenty-four seven. They closed it for a few years, they understood that the densest population in the town and the most development was going on in the north part of town. They reopened the fire station on a part-time basis. But the fact has always remained that the coverage from the fire station to that part of town is mission critical. Whether this parcel, and I agree with Lisa, someone's going to develop it, and if you spend the money, even if you put it into conservation, you can certainly make it look a lot better than it does now. We've spent a lot of money on pieces of land that have, you know, little or no value, but you have to stop and think that there are a number of issues here. The traffic, the location, yes, it's going to have to be engineered. Is it a good site for a fire station? Depending upon the configuration of the intersection, twenty-one thousand cars a day, it's a busy section of town, and we have to wait for a fire truck to come from the center of town. And, you know, it takes three or four minutes. So I don't want you to pass on this because you don't have all the answers. I mean, you voted for, to allow the town to negotiate on an electric proposal earlier this evening that we had no details on. There was no handout. We had to take the word of those gentlemen who were representing a private company, and what little we know. You made that decision. Again, I agree with Lisa that this can be converted if necessary. Again, I am familiar with the property, and there are other issues to be considered, but I will leave that much with you today. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Dan Fabucio from the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This town is graced with two police, the police chief and fire chief, who are so energetic and engaged in this community and in their departments, in their forward thinking. They came to the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator with this idea, and I support them. I support this plan. The study that will be conducted will help to develop a plan for the fire stations, but tonight, what we're doing is buying a piece of property that's in the perfect location. In the fire chief's own words, that's where his fire station needs to be. He doesn't need any other study than his own empirical evidence that he sees every day at the firehouse. He knows where he needs to be. That's the study. He knows that piece of land, whether it's that piece of land or somewhere in that vicinity, that's where he needs to be. The police chief also has done his study. He needs his police department to be the face of Pembroke in the center of town. Right now, where the police station is on the curve, we know where it is, but do people in distress know where it is? Do people who need, and this happens, people need to drop off children and exchange between two parents that are not getting along in front of the police station? front of the police station. That needs to be done, in the chief's words, in the center of town, right there, visible. These two guys are forward-thinking, energetic. They know what their departments need. There needs to be a study for the exact space configuration of both stations. We know that. But tonight, for this article, we, the chiefs, the Board of Selectmen, are hoping that you'll say yes to buying this property, to lock it into us. And you will also, when the time comes, when the study is done, town meeting needs to allow us to spend the money for the fire station and police station. So this is only for, this is not to build a fire station. This is to secure a piece of property that's in the exact location that our chief knows where it has to be. So I would hope you support the two chiefs. I hope you will support what they know to be the best location for their needs, for their departments, and vote yes for this.
Chair recognizes Carol Dodge.
As somebody that, as somebody that started to work for $56 a week as a telephone operator a very long time ago, $820,000 sounds like a great deal of money. However, the parcel that abuts, the proposal that's on the floor, went April 6th by dawn of shoot to an electrical supply company for $900,000. As it's been said, this property is not going to sit forever, and I believe we are in desperate need of a new firehouse. I had the pleasure of being at the dedication of the existing firehouse, and when I went last fall for the ceremony over the new alarm system or equipment, the former chief said the four of us were the only ones that were there. We need a new firehouse. Please buy this land. I move the question.
Can't allow anyone to speak and then move the question. It has to be, it's like closing the, saying what you want to say and then closing off discussion. I know that's not Carol's intent, but I can't allow it.
Brian Tolan, Forest Street, 51 years in the town. We need this property only for the simple reason, the fire station there is inadequate. And as everybody said tonight, you've got to have a fire station. Us older people don't really, won't probably be here when it's built. But the young people should think about this, because that property is a good property for the fire station, and you better start thinking about the future.
Chair recognizes James Kincaid.
I hate to be a one-item person, but can I move the article?
Yes, you may. All those in favor of the motion to move the article and go right to a vote, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it. So we'll go right to the vote. This requires a two-thirds because there's a bond authorization involved. So we'll try it first, again, with a show of hands, and if it's too close, we'll do a roll call, I mean, a standing vote. So all those in favor of the motion by John Brown on Article 5, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it. I declare it reached necessary. Two-thirds needed for passing. And the final article in the special is Article 8.
Mr. Moderator.
Chair recognizes.
Mr. Moderator. Move to reconsider Article 7?
Will. Once again, the chair, this was tested some time ago.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to say we have more information now. Apparently, there is no need for a study, according to Mr. Tribuco. The police and fire chief have done their studies. They've determined this property is correct, and they've determined the current fire station is the correct place for the police station. This was not brought forward when Article 7 came up.
All right. I'm going to move on to Article 8 and recognize. Oh, I'm sorry. Betty Monks from Advisory.
Mr. Moderator, move that the sum of $18,000 be appropriated and transferred from free cash to be expended for the purpose of purchasing bulletproof vests and cruiser ballistic kits and for costs incidental or related thereto.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on this item? Chief, the Chair recognizes Chief Wall.
Thank you. As Mr. Kincaid said earlier, I hate to be a one-item person, but is this on?
Yeah, it is.
We have a grant program through the Department of Justice to purchase ballistic vests that we all wear. The only shelf life is five years, and it's a 50% buyback. So if we put in half the money, the feds pay for the other half. We're coming up to that five years. I have several new offices that I also need to outfit, so the regular vests need to be replaced. And again, we're coming up to that five years for the guys. And then the tactical training that we do, the active shooter training that we do in the schools, we have a ceramic vest product that I'm trying to put in the cruisers. These are good to stop rifle shots where the other vests aren't. So I want to make sure that the officers have the right equipment when they're out there. It's something that every department's upgrading to. If you saw the San Bernardino shooting and everything else, have to give the guys the right gear. So there's going to be some buyback on the grant. I should be able to get all the vests that we need and get us up to date. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? It does require a transfer from free cash, so it requires a two-thirds vote. So we'll do it first by a show of hands. All, is Article 8? Okay. Something changed. I have a two-thirds here, so, okay. Simple majority. All those in favor of the motion by Advisory in Article 8, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. Mr. Boyle moves that the special town meeting be adjourned. Is there a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. And we will move on to the annual. Involved. Lots of good discussion. Article 26 on the annual town meeting. It's on page 14. The Chair recognizes Linda Peterson.
Would the people please stay? There's still a lot more of this meeting to be had, and we need to handle it in one night. You've been very patient so far, but let's try to continue at this point. Mr. Moderator, motion to appropriate or endure transfer from community preservation annual reserves the following amounts to be used for the committee's administrative expenses, community preservation projects, and other expenses in fiscal year 2017. Appropriation from fiscal year 17, estimated revenues for historic resources reserve, $35,000. From fiscal year 17, estimated revenues for community housing reserves, $35,000. From fiscal year 17, estimated reserves for open space reserves, $35,000. From fiscal year, estimated reserves, committee administrative expenses, $15,000.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion by Advisory, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted.
Mr. Moderator.
Chair, pages eight and nine, and the Chair recognizes Linda Peterson.
Move that the town vote to authorize revolving accounts pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 44, Section 53E 1/2, as printed in Article 9 of the annual town meeting warrant.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it. I declare it so voted. Article 19.
I'd like to make a motion for Article 19, move to appropriate and transfer the sum of $75,000 from free cash to be added to the amounts voted under Article 3, Police Wages and Salaries of the May 10, 2016 Annual Town Meeting for the purpose of funding a full-time school resource officer.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. The Chair recognizes Chief Wall.
My original budget was to include more police officers, trying to get our staffing back up, and a full-time school resource officer. And the thought was that the officer would spend half his time in the middle school, half his time in the high school. We'll work it out so that we develop a program with the school, in the school committee, to, you know, the best advantage to the schools, and start developing that relationship between the police and the community. Part of the original request was also for money for school liaison officers to work in a elementary school, and we will find funding for them through other sources. It's important that we get the full-time guy. There's a police academy. August 1, I don't have a man to spare until I have another guy to put on the street. I can't take somebody off of patrol. We're at minimum manpower, regular shifts. So we'll have them in the schools, a full-time officer by Christmas break.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the School Committee, Mike Toriano.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. There's a one-page handout that has some of the key facts with regard to what the school resource officer would do within our schools. It's something that we've been looking for, for several years within our budget, but unfortunately not been able to fund, just because of a lot of the constraints we've had. But the one point I want to take out, because a lot of people, I'm sure, is when you read the duties performed, what you would expect. It's to be a presence to increase safety within the schools, work with administrators on a lot of, some of the curriculum pieces around, especially student health and student safety. But the one piece for us that stood out, we just recently surveyed, as you can see, our 7th, 9th, and 11th graders, and we got some pretty startling responses with regard to student engagement and the ability for students to have someone to connect with. A lot of our students are in crisis, as you can see and it says here. The students that we have now are considerably different than what we had 5, 10, 15 years ago as we were opening this high school. This is really something we need. This gives us another adult within the school that the students can identify with. We have great staff, teachers, administrators, a lot of the support staff that kids can relate with. But you can see here that some kids right now don't have an adult that they can relate with, whether it be a coach or anything. This just gives us another adult in the school to try and identify kids with needs. You look within our budget, within the handout there, we were adding two social workers to the district because of a lot of the social emotional issues we're dealing with today. This would just be another support to try and help us deal with a lot of those kids who are in crisis. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Chief recognizes, the Chair recognizes Chief Wall.
So real quickly, the ballistic vests that we just saw, we purchased those for shootings and for critical incidents. Having a school resource officer, hopefully we can prevent that in the awareness and being involved. If we get to the point we have to go to a school or a business for a shooting, we've already lost. So being involved and being aware at the earliest point is where we need to be. So preventative measures that we're looking at.
Is there any further discussion on this article? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion by the chief on Article 19, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. I'll declare it unanimous. Article 12. Chair recognizes Stephen Walsh from Advisory.
Move that $820,000 is appropriated for the purpose of constructing a sidewalk on Hobymark Street from Learning Lane to Center Street. That to meet this appropriation, that the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow $820,000 under General Law's 44, Section 7.6, or any other enabling authority. And further, that the selectmen are authorized to petition the General Court for legislation that would permit any long-term borrowing authorized for the project to be repaid over a term of 20 years, exclusive of the terms of any temporary notes issued in anticipation thereof, and that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to take any action necessary to carry out this project. Favorable action.
Motion's been made. Is there a second? Chair, he has seconded. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none. All those, there is an authorization to bar, right? So it needs a two-thirds majority. We'll do it by a show of hands first. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. I declare it so voted, having reached the necessary two-thirds needed for passing. Chair recognizes Linda Peterson.
Mr. Moderator, move that the sum of $10,000 be appropriated and transferred from free cash to be expended for the purpose of replacing wooden guide rails on Marley-McWay and Captain Torrey Lane.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion by Advisory, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. Chair recognizes Jim McCollum.
Mr. Moderator, we need to get a longer wire for this mic. Mr. Moderator, move that the town rescinds the sum of $490,000 of debt previously authorized, which is no longer needed for the purposes for which the borrowing was previously approved. Said borrowing having been incurred as follows. $20,000 approved on 10/21/08 in Article 1, Police Building Renovations. $5,000 approved on 10/21/08, Article 1, Police Generator Switch. $50,000 approved on 10/21/08 in Article 1, DPW One-Ton Dump Truck. $10,000 approved on 10/21/08 in Article 1, DPW Air Compressor. $40,000 approved on 10/21/08 in Article 1, DPW Ford F-350 Pickup. $60,000 approved on 10/21/08 in Article 1, DPW Six-Ton Dump Truck. $10,000 approved on 10/19/10 in Article 19, Mill Street Culvert. $25,000 approved on 4/26/11 in Article 21, Land and Acquisition, the Swanburg Property. $270,000 approved on 10/21/08 in Article 1, Fire Department Brush Truck.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? You could state your name.
Mike McKenna, 18, Herring Brook Lane. In the last town meeting, there was discussion about the sanding truck that we hadn't taken delivery on. Is it in this list? Have we taken delivery on it yet?
Well, I'd ask, okay. Paul, why don't you take the microphone? Chair recognizes Paul Whitman from DPW.
Yes, we've received the truck that we appropriated last spring at the meeting. And we actually have the two 10-wheelers now that both have sanders on them. So yes, we did, and they're not in this.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion by Advisory, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. It's on page 14 of the warrant. The Chair recognizes Stephen Curly.
Mr. Moderator, I move to appropriate any remaining balance of funds as of the termination of this annual town meeting from Community Preservation Fund, fiscal year 17, estimated annual revenues to the annual budgeted reserve.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Motion's been made and seconded. Rather routine item. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion by Advisory, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. Article 24. The Chair recognizes Scott Globin from the DPW. Oh, Conservation Commissioner, sorry.
Mr. Moderator, we're looking for $9,000 to remove some dangerous trees from the property that abuts the DPW yard on Matakeese Street. Half the trees are dead and diseased, and we'd like to remove them before there's an issue.
Is there a second? Actually, yeah, was the motion? Yeah, do you have the motion, Scott? Why don't you read it?
Move the sum of $9,000 be appropriated and transferred from free cash to be expended for the purpose of tree removal from the area of 415 Matakeese Street shown on Assessors' map, A4, A7, Lot 26.
Motion's been made and seconded. Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. Oh, we did three. Article 1. It was back to the days when we had town reports that were actually read on town meeting floor. The Chair recognizes Betty Monks.
Mr. Moderator, move to accept the reports of the town officers, boards, committees, and commissions.
Any discussion? All those in favor of Article 1, please raise your hand. All those opposed, the ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. Article 13. Chair recognizes John Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Move that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift purchase and/or eminent domain the fee to and/or permanent and/or temporary easements in portions of the parcels of land located on Center Street and on abutting streets for public way purposes, including without limitations, for the construction, alterations, installations, maintenance, improvement, repair, replacement, and/or relocation of rights-of-way drainage, utility, sidewalk, slope, grading, rounding, construction, and other easements to enable the town to undertake the Center Street reconstruction project, which parcels are listed on a sheet entitled Parcel Summary Sheet and approximately shown on plans entitled Preliminary Right-of-Way Plan Center Street in the town of Pembroke, Plymouth County, prepared by the Massachusetts Highway Department, which summary sheet and plans are in file with the town clerk as said plans may be amended to transfer the care, custody, and control of the portion or portions of the town property located at 555 Center Street as shown on the aforementioned plans from DPW Commissioners of Water Supply, Wellfield, proposes to the Board of Selectmen for public way and utility purposes, and further to dedicate said portions to the town-owned property to the foregoing purposes authorized the Board of Selectmen to seek such authorization and approve of the General Court as may be necessary to allow for such transfer and/or use, which may include a petition under Article 97 of the Amendments to the Constitution, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into all agreements and take all actions necessary and/or appropriate to carry out the foregoing transactions.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Chair recognizes-
Sorry, it's me, Jeanne Gilody again. I know that was like 27 hours long. In as short as possible, I've read this article several times. I have no idea what it means. Can you just maybe explain what the heck this means? Anybody who's, this is?
Chair recognizes Town Administrator Ed Thorne.
Yeah, this is similar to the Barker Street Project and Matakeese Street that you see right now. And for those of you that live along Route 14, this allows the Board of Selectmen to enter into easements, you know, on the Route 36 project, which is going to go from the center of town all the way to Route 27.
Any further, excuse me, further discussion on this item? Seeing none. All those, this does require a two-thirds. All those in favor of the motion by Advisory, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted, having reached the necessary two-thirds necessary for passage. Article 18. Chair recognizes Linda Peterson.
Mr. Moderator, move that the sum of $15,000 be appropriated and transferred from free cash to be expended for the purpose of road construction widening and paving at the Mine Grove Cemetery.
Any discussion on this matter? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion by Advisory, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. Article 10. It's on page nine of your warrant, and the Chair recognizes Betty Monks from Advisory.
Mr. Moderator, move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into contracts with the Massachusetts Department of Transportation for the construction and maintenance of public highways for the ensuing year.
Second. Routine article. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, no. Raise your hand. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. Article 5. Chair recognizes Jim McCollum.
Mr. Moderator, move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $1,649,139 from solid waste revenue to fund the FY17 Solid Waste Enterprise Fund as shown in Appendix C. of this warrant.
You've heard the motion. Appendix C. is in the back of the warrant. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion by Advisory, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. Article 21. On page 13, Chair recognizes Jim McCollum.
Mr. Moderator, move that the town vote to create a new revolving fund in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and 1/2, into which receipts for recreation and park services shall be deposited, and from which dispersments in an amount which shall not exceed $50,000 for fiscal year 2017 may be expended in the connection with the upkeep and maintenance of town parks and recreation facilities.
Second. Any discussion on this matter? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion by Advisory, please raise your hand. Opposed, no. Please raise your hand. I declare it so voted. Article 29. Chair recognizes Linda Peterson.
Mr. Moderator, move that to bring the election offices their vote, all on one ballot for the offices and committees as printed on Article 29 of the Annual Town Meeting warrant.
Routine. The election is actually part of the warrant officially, so it's a warrant article. We urge you all to vote on Saturday. All those in favor of voting on Saturday, please raise your hand. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Article 15.
Move that the town vote to raise and appropriate-
Wait, whoa, whoa, whoa. Good recognize it. Chair recognizes Paul Whitman from the DPW.
Okay, move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $300,000 to supplement Chapter 90 funding for the pavement management plan for accepted and unaccepted local roads of Pembroke.
Is there a second? Chair hears second. Chair recognizes-
Mr. Moderator.
Steve Curly.
There is no room to raise and appropriate at this time. This was supposed to be a borrowing. If we were to do this and raise and appropriate, we would have to open up the budget again and cut $300,000.
Chair recognizes Town Accountant Mike Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'll just second what Steve said. If we approve this article tonight, that would create a $300,000 deficit that would have to be made up before we set the tax rate. That means we would have to open up the budget. Simple math, $150,000 from the school department, between $100 and $150 from the public safety departments, and it could mean no school resource officer. This is a long-term, permanent need of the DPW. They need about $900,000 a year for the streets. The state's going to give them $550,000 next year. I would suggest if the Commissioners really wanted to go forward with this funding, they'd do what the school committee did last year and ask for the town for a proposition 2 1/2 override. And that would be a permanent solution to a permanent problem.
Chair recognizes Tom Driscoll from the Board of Health.
Thomas Driscoll, 21, Cedar Terrace. In six years, how many times, how many, how many times have you guys come in front of the Selectmen to ask for money for the roads?
Well, we get to address it through the Chair. The Chair recognizes Paul Whitman from the-
Every year between talking to the Selectmen, talking to Advisory about the roads, and getting funding to do this thing properly.
So, you've-
Well, we've got to go through the Chair. Chair recognizes Tom Driscoll.
Sorry, Chair. So, you've come in front of them to ask for money for the roads several times, and like line items in the budget? Yeah?
That's correct.
Why haven't, we haven't heard anything about the town meeting. I don't understand why it's coming up now. I mean, the roads are obviously in disrepair from that presentation you gave in January, right? So, you guys went, you did one before that, correct?
Well, I can't allow a discussion here.
I apologize.
I just, so, I can phrase a question, and then I'll give the DPW a chance to answer it.
We've had many estimates of what the roads are going to cost to take and make repairs on secondary and primary roads in the town of Pembroke, and we've submitted those to the Selectmen twice. We've had public hearings on it. We've been to Advisory asking for money. What happens in the road system here is that you have Chapter 90 money that's used for accepted roads only. Unaccepted roads in the town of Pembroke get $25,000 in our budget to deal with 15 miles of unaccepted roads. That is kind of a hard way to take care of the roads for 20% of the public that probably lives on it, on unaccepted roads, or 20% of the roadways that we have. We're trying to justify building buildings around here, and we're not adequately taking care of the road systems that we have. $300,000 a year in the general road maintenance budget is justified and is probably a line item budget that we need going forward. This is a way to bring it forward to the public to try to get the funding required to maintain these roads safely.
Chair recognizes Tom Driscoll. Okay, all right. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none.
Hi, Deborah Wall, Library Director in West Woodbine Ave. I am totally in favor of the road repair. However, I have deep concerns about trying to come up with $300,000 in the fiscal 17 budget. As the Town Accountant pointed out, it doesn't exist unless it's borrowed. So, my question is, could we address this and perhaps borrow this money if this were to go forward tonight, rather than try to flat-out rob it from other departments, including the schools?
Well, the Chair would answer it's appropriate motion to amend the motion to authorize borrowing.
All right. I would like to move an amendment to the motion to just see if the town will vote to borrow $300,000 to supplement Chapter 90 funding for pavement management plan for accepted and unacceptable roads for the town of Pembroke, or take any action thereto.
Well, you can leave out the "take any action," but we'll take the rest of it. Chair recognizes Dan Tribuco.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I needed to stand up to represent the Board of Selectmen because the DPW Commissioners did come before us to discuss this matter, as they do every year. And this year, we were unable to give them $300,000 out of, pull it out of this budget. I don't think that the DPW should have to come in with an article to gain the money that they need to permanently fix our roads and keep on top of them. They should have their budget line item to the amount of money it takes to maintain our roads, but right now, they don't. It's a problem we need to fix. We will have to deal with that. But for this town meeting, for this $300,000 and for that amendment, I urge you to vote no. Please do not, please vote no on this article. We do not have the $300,000 in this budget. We've already voted the budget, so we'd have to open it up and pull it out. And we do not, and I'll let the Advisory Committee speak further, but we do not have the appetite to borrow $300,000 for this project. This is an ongoing project. It's not acute. We need to work with the DPW Commissioners as a town, and if it takes an override in the future, we'll discuss it with them then. I don't want to leave them hanging. They came before us, so I wanted to make sure that they knew, and you know, that the Board of Selectmen have discussed this. But tonight, I urge you to vote no.
Chair recognizes Steve Curly from Advisory.
Mr. Moderator, to echo something that Dan was mentioning there, this $300,000 is an annual $300,000 they're looking for. If we start borrowing $300,000 a year to do this, it's going to be costing us $300,000 a year within very short time. It's just the wrong way to do things, is borrow something. To borrow to pay something that's a recurring item. We had a very, very difficult time balancing this year's budget. I think if you take a look at how much the healthcare went up and how much the, some of the other things, such as the pensions and everything else, went up this year, you know, it's like 3/4 of a million dollars in just those two line items. I would also point out that, you know, to make this balance, the reserve fund was cut from $70,000 to $50,000. What that is, is that at times, if some emergency happens, you know, water heater goes for a building or something like that, we can get the money out of the reserve fund because it wasn't anticipated and in the budget. Many years, we spent more than $50,000. So, to cut that to $50,000, just sort of a warning to the department heads, if you're going to run short of money, do it early, because we may run out of reserve fund. It was really a difficult one to balance. It was an excellent proposal that was brought to us by the DPW. We certainly would have loved to have been able to give them that money because it costs a lot of money to keep a lot of the roads going. You know, we understand that, but, you know, at this particular time, it just wasn't possible.
Chair recognizes Selectman Lou Stone.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd just like to tell the group that's here tonight that the DPW has done their homework on this, and they have been before the Selectmen several times with a proposal explicitly outlining the work that needs to be done on our roads and how much that work is going to cost. Unfortunately, as you heard, the only way we could give them the money in this budget is to make some drastic cuts in how we run this town. in how we run this town. And we're so tight now, that's not going to happen. So what is the answer? You're going to love this answer. It's going to be an override. That's the only way we can fund this project to bring our roads up, not to be perfect, but the study that was done gave us several choices, each one with a price tag. So three hundred thousand is probably the number over and above what they're getting from the state. It could be four hundred thousand, because we have a lot of unaccepted roads, which you cannot fix using the state money. And the budget for unaccepted roads right now is twenty-five thousand dollars. You can't do much with that. So I don't have an answer tonight, but I just feel that I want to make a statement to let you know that to get our roads in the shape that they should be in with a planned way to do it, I believe we're going to have to look at an override. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Deborah Wall.
I just want to withdraw my motion and see what happens.
Okay. So the motion is withdrawn? The amendment to the motion is withdrawn? So the motion before us is the motion made by DPW, which would be to raise and appropriate the sum of three hundred thousand dollars. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, it's a simple majority. All those in favor of the motion by DPW, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. I declare it lost. Article twenty-five. Chair recognizes Betty Monks from advisory.
Mr. Moderator, move that the town raise and appropriate from taxation some of ten thousand dollars to be added to the open space fund.
Is there any discussion on this item? This is a recurring item? Pledge that was made several years ago after an expenditure at town meeting. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion by advisory, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. Article twenty-two. Chair recognizes John Brown.
Move that the town vote to create a new revolving fund in accordance to Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E and one-half, in which receipts for senior recreation services shall be deposited and for which dispersments in an amount which shall not exceed twenty thousand dollars for the fiscal year 2017 may be expended in connection with the upkeep and the maintenance of the Council of Aging and Senior Center of Facilities.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion by advisory, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. Article six. Chair recognizes Stephen Curley.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of eighteen thousand one hundred and five dollars from taxation and eleven thousand eighty-two dollars from water revenue to fund a new collective bargaining agreement between the town of Pembroke and Council Ninety-three, Local Seventeen Hundred Public Works, for the period from July one, two thousand and sixteen, to June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen. And further, to appropriate the sum of twenty-five thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight from taxation, nine hundred and six from water revenue, and four hundred and eighty-two dollars from trash revenue to fund a new collective bargaining agreement between the town of Pembroke and Council Ninety-three, Local Seventeen Hundred Town Hall, for the period from July one, two thousand and sixteen, to June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Chair recognizes Doc Akabuchi. Got to use the microphone, please. Doc, you have to use the microphone so we can hear you.
Heard a lot of transfers, but I'd like to know what the total amount is that we accumulate to fund this need.
Chair recognizes Mike Buckley.
It's approximately fifty-four thousand five hundred dollars. I could have an exact amount, but that's approximately what it is.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion by advisory, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. Article twenty-three. Chair recognizes Stephen Walsh from advisory.
Thank you. Move to amend Schedule A, Classification and Compensation Bylaw by adding the position of Assistant Library Director, Schedule S.A. thirty-two, at a rate of minimum step forty-four thousand two seventy-five, second step forty-six thousand two twenty-four, third step forty-eight thousand one seventy-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. The chair recognizes Steve Curley.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to amend that to say that to transfer from, to raise and appropriate five thousand dollars to be added to the amount voted under the library personal services and the annual town meeting warrant.
Why don't we, instead of amending the motion and require two votes, why don't we just, just do it right the first time? So I'm a little confused, so why don't we just, what's the motion?
I'll defer to the town accountant. Are you going to adjust the five thousand?
Well, we need someone to make a motion that reflects the change that advisory made. Good.
All right, advisory-
Chair recognizes Deborah Wall.
What advisory did is they read what I had submitted as the original article, which was the wording as it started, and then to raise and appropriate five thousand dollars added into our budget. Are we removing?
Chair recognizes Mike Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We had previous discussions where I was told the library did not need that money. They could fit it within the budget.
All right. The chair is confused.
All right.
So if the chair is confused, most people in this auditorium are confused.
I can, if we could-
It's far, we don't have a motion.
Right.
So-
We need to adjust the-
We need a motion. So what you read is the original motion. Why don't you read it again so people understand what we're doing here?
Move to amend Schedule A, Classification and Compensation Bylaw, by adding the position of Assistant Library Director, Schedule S.A. thirty-two, at a rate of minimum step forty-four thousand two hundred and seventy-five, second step forty-six thousand two hundred and twenty-four, third step forty-eight thousand one seventy-four.
Second.
It's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Chair recognizes Deborah Wall.
I just want to explain very, very briefly this article. This is not an additional body. It's actually changing the position of an existing person to meet the job descriptions that they're actually fulfilling. So it's just creating, taking one position's name and changing it to another position. It's not a new person. And it's very important that I have some backup. Thank you.
Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion by advisory, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. Article four. Chair recognizes Timothy Brennan.
Move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of one million nine hundred and fourteen thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars from water revenue to fund the fiscal year two thousand and seventeen Water Enterprise Fund, as shown in Appendix B of this warrant.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. Article seven. Chair recognizes John Brown.
Move to take no action on Article seven.
Motion's been made to take no action on Article seven. It's ultimately your decision. All those in favor of the motion by advisory, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. We are winding our way down to a precious few. Article eleven is the next item of business. And the chair recognizes Timothy Brennan.
Move that the town raise and appropriate from taxation the sum of five thousand dollars to be expended by the Board of Selectmen to contract with the South Shore Community Action Council for services for low-income and elderly individuals and families.
Any discussion on this matter? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion by advisory, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. Article twenty-eight. Where's Brian? He had to leave, okay. Well, these are the, this article contains six separate recommendations, which we will take separately. And so I'll defer to Tim Brennan from advisory for the motion. First, on Recommendation A. And these, again, for clarification, are all monies to be appropriated from the Community Preservation Fund.
Move to appropriate the sum of seventy thousand dollars from community housing reserves and the sum of thirty thousand dollars from estimated FY seventeen annual revenues, and that said funds to be used by Pembroke Housing Authority for the purpose of replacing the existing fire alarm system at the Kill Commons Drive housing complex.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on this matter? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it. Recommendation B, the chair recognizes Jim McCollum.
Mr. Moderator, move to appropriate the sum of twelve thousand four hundred and eleven dollars and sixty-seven cents from FY seventeen housing fund reserves, and that said funds be used by the Pembroke Housing Authority for the purpose of finalizing payment for the installation of intercom systems at the Kill Commons Drive and Mayflower Court housing complexes.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of this matter, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Or raise your hand. No, please say no. The ayes have it. I declare it so voted. Recommendation C. Chair recognizes John Brown.
Move to appropriate the sum of forty-five thousand dollars from Historic Fund Reserves, and that said funds be used by the trustees of the Cobb Library for the purposes of completing Phase Two of the replacement of the exterior shingles, front porch decking and railing, storm door, bulkhead, stained glass storm window, painting of all exterior trim, and repair of curbing.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. Recommendation D. Chair recognizes Stephen Walsh.
Thank you. Move to appropriate the sum of thirty-five thousand dollars from the Historic Fund Reserve and the sum of a hundred thousand dollars from estimated FY seventeen annual revenues, and that the said funds be used by the town of Pembroke for the purpose of replacing the roof, repairing and painting the exterior, renovating the front wall and install covered entry roof at the G.A.R. Hall, otherwise known as the Police Boys Club on Center Street.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. Recommendation E. Chair recognizes Betty Monks.
Mr. Moderator, move to appropriate the sum of nine thousand two hundred dollars from Open Space Recreation Fund Reserve, and that said funds be used by Pembroke Youth Baseball for the purpose of replacing the fencing at Mac Phillips Field at the Madison Street Baseball Field.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on this matter? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. Recommendation F. Chair recognizes John Brown.
Move to appropriate the sum of two thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars for Open Space Recreation Fund Reserves, and that said funds be used by the Pembroke Recreation Commission for the purpose of installing gates at the entrance of, on Madison Street to the J.J. Shepherd Memorial Forest.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on this recommendation? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. Article eight.
We have a G.
Oh, did I miss G? I apologize. Chair recognizes Steve Curley.
Mr. Moderator, I move to appropriate the sum of four thousand five hundred dollars from Open Space Recreation Fund Reserves, and that said funds be used by the Pembroke Recreation Commission for the purpose of repairing exposed roof beams at the Harry M. Woods Memorial Bandstand on Center Street.
Any discussion on this matter? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. Now, Article eight. Chair recognizes Stephen Walsh.
Thank you. Move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to make application for and to accept federal and state grants for the assistance pertaining to community development projects or programs.
Any discussion on this matter? Seeing none, this is a routine article. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Opposed, no, please raise your hand. And the last item of business is Article sixteen. Chair recognizes Stephen Curley.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the sum of eighty-five thousand dollars be appropriated and transferred from free cash to be expended for the purpose of disposing of the debris from catch-based cleanings and street sweepings and for costs incidental or related thereto.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion by advisory, please raise your hand. Opposed, no, please raise your hand. And the motion passes. I declare it so voted. The chair would like to thank you for your patience. All those who like the new time, raise your hand. We started about a half hour earlier and ended about forty-five minutes earlier than we normally do. So I thank you for attending, for being here, for participating. We'll probably see you in the fall. Don't forget to vote Saturday. Polls open at nine, close at seven. Arthur Boyle moves that the meeting stand in adjournment. Is there a second? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no, the ayes have it. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Thank you.